That's acceptable.
Sure.
Not our... She had dental work done.
Oh, shit.
Yeah.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, please call the roll.
Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilwoman Miles?
Here.
Councilman Zimmerman?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Pitts?
Here.
Mayor Rosini?
Here.
All present.
Before we start, I would like to ask our city attorney to report out on closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. We did discuss the items on the agenda. Under matter one, we actually only considered one case of significant exposure, and on the second case, the only case, there is no reportable action. There's no reportable action on either case.
Thank you. Ordinarily, we would ask a special guest to help lead us in the pledge of allegiance, but our special guest had dental work today. So, in lieu of that, I'm going to have council member Bob Colacott lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Okay, please place your hands over your heart, and we'll say pledge of allegiance to the greatest symbol of freedom in the world. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Please be seated. Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask all those in attendance to please silence your cellphones or turn them off if possible. The Villa Park City Council and staff welcome you to this meeting, and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the city council, please complete and submit a blue speaker card to the city clerk before the scheduled meeting time, or now is fine. Speaker cards can be found at the entrance to the city council chambers, and speakers will be limited to a time period of five minutes. We'll start off with a few presentations this evening. First one, I'd like to have a really incredible young lady come forward. Bailey, would you please come forward with your mom? Come on. I learned of this young lady just a few weeks ago. She's truly an amazing young lady. She's accomplished a heck of a lot in a very short period of time. I'm here to present the Girl Scout Gold Award proclamation and gold pen to Bailey Gallagher. Let me just tell you a little bit about the award and about her achievements. The Girl Scout Gold Award is the highest and most prestigious award in girl scouting, comparable to the Boy Scouts of America's Eagle Scout. Each year, the Gold Award is presented to the girls in grades nine through 12 who have planned and executed significant projects in response to pressing community needs. This young woman has earned the Gold Award and has become a community leader. Her accomplishments reflect outstanding leadership and citizenship skills. The Girl Scout Gold Award is awarded to fewer than 6% nationwide annually. Each Gold Award Girl Scout spends between one to two years on their project. Bailey Gallagher is the only Villa Park resident who will be awarded the Girl Scout Gold Award in 2019. Bailey has been a Girl Scout in Villa Park since kindergarten. 2019 is her 13th year in the program. As a freshman attending Villa Park High in 2016, she was struggling with a project that was gold-worthy and that she felt passionate about. She couldn't quite figure out what to do, and then something happened. During the canyon fire, too, she was actively involved in helping with the Peacock Equestrian Center evacuation. This was no easy task. The facility holds somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 horses. After her horses were safe, she and her trainer went back inside the Orange Park acre neighborhood and helped other horse owners to evacuate their livestock. Bailey took action, and she assisted numerous people with that evacuation. Weeks went by with owners still trying to find where their horses were and where they ended up. She researched a solution, and she thought of a way of making collars that were easily accessible, user-friendly, and contained pertinent information that would help with the current situation and future evacuations of horses or other large livestock. Two years later, she has completed her project and began educating residents on how to properly ID their large animals and also what they need to do in case of an evacuation. Great work, Bailey. It is an honor to present this proclamation to Bailey Gallagher. We thank you for your work and congratulate you. Everyone, please come forward for a photo.
This is my amazing project advisor, Kelly Serbina. I couldn't have done that.
Oh, okay. All right.
True at all. I'm the advisor, not the person.
Everyone, come on inside. Let's take a photo real quick. All right.
I'll be in it.
Here's your Gold Award.
Here we go.
Here's your proclamation.
One, two, three. One more time.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. I will hold on. I don't want you to drop that. And if you'd like to say a few words, we'd love to hear from you. Bombshell. Please join us at the podium there.
So... So with my project, I decided you would think that getting all the horses out was the worst thing and the hardest thing to get out, but actually it was to locate your animal after. And so, it took... I watched for a minimum of two months, people trying to find their animals. I watched kids sobbing as they couldn't find their ponies. And if any of you've seen kids with horses, you separate from their horse. It's like their favorite toy. It's not good. So, what I watched, and there was no way to ID them. So, like, people would try to put duct tape on their horses with the phone number, but the sweat would cause it to come off. And I'm sure that you all know that Sharpie on duct tape tends to wear off over time. So, I came up with these nylon webbing collars that aren't meant to let your horse loose. They're meant to clip around the base of the horse's neck. You write down their name, your phone number, vet's phone number, as well as their microchip number, if they are microchipped, and any major allergies that they have. You clip it around their neck, make sure it's not choking them. It's just loose enough that if they were to need to escape, they can slip out of it easily. And you load them into a trailer, and you let them go, allowing you to help other people with their horses and you being able to find your animal easily after.
Please give.
Bailey, I have to say, we're really proud of you. I don't know if you know this. You're part of a phenomenal organization for women, and I have to tell you, 50... I don't know if you know this stat or not, but 50% of the women that are in business today started in Girl Scouts. 73% of our US senators are females that went through the Girl Scout program, and 100% of our Secretaries of State were in the Girl Scout program. So, you have a lot to look forward to, and we look forward to you being a great leader.
Thank you, Bailey.
Congratulations.
Thank you again.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Great job, Bailey.
All right. Next presentation, we have Donate Life California. This is Donate Life California Month, and Donate Life California is a state-authorized nonprofit organization responsible for managing the organ eye and tissue donor registry. The program offers cities, excuse me, the opportunity to issue an official proclamation declaring the month of April as DMV Donate Life California Month. This will help encourage people to take the necessary steps to ensure their wish to save lives is honored by signing up as an organ eye and tissue donor via the DMV when they renew and apply for a driver's license or an ID card. It is an honor to present this proclamation in support of their lifesaving mission. Nicole, would you please come forward? All right, let's grab a photo, please. Counsel? Nicole, would you like to say a few words about the program?
Sure would. Mayor Rosini, city council members, I truly appreciate your support with Villa Park for the Donate Life California Month. As a donor mom, my son Austin was 22 when he was on his way to school on his motorcycle when he was in an accident, and he did not survive that. But he was able to be a donor. He donated four organs and his tissue and eyes. I found out later that his tissue was used 173 times across the United States. It truly was a silver lining for us that he was able to be a donor, and I didn't realize at the time just how rare that is. About 4 in 1,000 people die in a way that's even compatible with organ donation. You have to die in a hospital on a ventilator, and you have to be brain-dead. Now, let's say two of those people are registered donors. Then, you have to go through and start testing and matching. So, you can see that just because somebody is registered doesn't necessarily mean that they're going to be able to be a donor. I thank you for your support of organ donation, and I hope that you can join us on our 17th annual Donate Life Run Walk at Cal State Fullerton on April 27th.
Cool. Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you so much.
That's too kind. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next presentation will be by the Orange County Sheriff's Department. Captain?
Mayor, council members. Captain Mike Peters, Orange County Sheriff's Department. Normally, your chief of police services, Pat Rich, is here, but he is in Texas at ICS training, so you're stuck with me. So, just some quick stats for you guys. First off, newly promoted, I come from a city south, and you guys are doing phenomenal work up here. When I was looking at the... taking a deep dive into the crime stats for tonight, as well as my division, you guys are doing an amazing job, not only as... with us as a department, but the community, because it takes a community to be able to have this much impact on crime. So, as far as stats go, through February, so January, February, 326 calls for service. Of those, 236 were self-initiated, and 90 were assigned. It's a good sign that the deputies are doing good work when you have that type of percentage of self-initiated that above assigned calls. It's just, it's a good sign for me to see that the deputies are working hard in the city. 39 traffic citations issued, only four traffic collisions, 27 parking citations, and your Part 1 crimes for February was one. You had one. So, if you put that into perspective, last year at this exact time, you had 15, and now you have four. So, I'm not a math guy, but I'm pretty sure that's about 73% improvement, and that's just phenomenal as a community. So, whatever your folks are doing, whatever the residents are doing, and of course, our staff, keep it up. Keep it up.
Thank you. I think we owe the Sheriff's Department the lion's share of the credit. Certainly, our residents, our Neighborhood Watch have all banded together to listen and follow the lead of the Sheriff's Department, but it's the outstanding activity and partnership with the Orange County Sheriff's Department that's made it possible. And again, we've thanked the group of deputies last council meeting and Lieutenant Rich, but it can happen enough times. They are courageous. They are innovative. They are extremely hardworking, and we're very blessed to have them serving our community. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Welcome. Glad to have you part of a city in the family. Glad to have you part of the city in the family.
Much appreciated. Thank you. Our next report or presentation will be by Chief Phoenix with the Orange County Fire Authority.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. And again, as Captain reported out, you're stuck with me because I know Mayor Rosini is well aware of it, but I don't know if all of you are, Division Chief Andy Kovats, who's been serving City of Villa Park for the last few years, has been offered and has accepted a job in Colorado. So, he'll be moving closer to home. It's a big loss for all of us, though. He was... he'll be missed. As far as Villa Park, there have been no major incidents over the last month, which I'm happy to report out. As far as Orange County Fire Authority, bigger items to report out are that we are progressing very... in a positive direction with the negotiations with the city of Irvine, for them to remain a member of the Orange County Fire Authority. And we are looking to add another member city to our fire authority in Garden Grove, and that's progressing in a positive direction also. Both are slated to take formal direction tomorrow at our Boarded... or on Thursday at our Board of Directors meeting. Until there is a Division Chief assigned to what's Orange County Fire Authority Division 4, which Villa Park is included in, I would be your best point of contact, because I will be the only Battalion Chief assigned to Villa Park for our three shifts, probably for another month or so, which would also coincide about the same timeframe that we will have a replacement for Chief Kovats. So, once again, Brad Phoenix, Orange County Fire Authority, if I can answer anything or help you out, please don't hesitate to contact me.
Thank you, Chief. Steve, do we have anybody from the library? We do. Thank you. Welcome. Please come forward.
I want to tell you a little bit about what we have to offer the community in April. We have a lot of new programs going on. One of the things that we've started is Creative Mondays. So, on Mondays at 11:00 a.m., Janine will be facilitating a group. There'll be a different theme every week, and she has even curated playlists to go with each meeting. So, it'll be a nice space for adults to come together and enjoy a chance to be creative and have fun. And I've been offering computer classes and classes on library resources every month. So far this year, I've had classes for people to learn how to use the library as a resource for job skills and career exploration. I've done a class on using free resources and subscriptions through the library for technology training. And this month, I offered a class on FreeGo. That's a music platform that the library offers patrons for free downloading. People can download five songs a week, and they get unlimited streaming music. So, that was a fun class. But I've had a lot of questions about basic things from Microsoft Word. So, that's what I'm teaching in April, and that will be April 24th at 4:00, an introduction to Microsoft Word. On April 22nd at 4:00, we're having an event for teens. That's Earth Day, so we're going to recycle t-shirts and make bags. Hopefully, bags, they'll carry books from the library in, but that'll be a fun thing to celebrate Earth Day. And then, we're gearing up for summer reading. It starts on June 17th, and it runs from June 17th to July 28th. A big focus for us this year will be getting more adults involved. We know that that's where teens learn their habits more than what we try to tell them to do, is by watching the role models in their lives. So, we'll be doing a lot to get adults involved with the summer reading program, and lots more to come on that. I brought event calendars for April, so if you don't remember all those dates, I will leave them in the back, and look forward to seeing you at the library.
Can you do us one big favor, because not everybody's had the opportunity to meet you since you're a relatively recent new arrival at our library? Could you introduce yourself and just tell us a little bit about your background?
Sure. I'm Shawna Bird. I've been at the library for about three months now. I've been out sick two meetings, so I'm happy to be here and be healthy. And I came from Colorado, so I know it's a beautiful place that the fire chief is going to. I came up to Villa Park from the San Clemente Branch of OC Public Libraries. I've been a librarian for about 10 years, and my focus has always been more adult services, and I manage the Information Services Department for a district in western Colorado.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilmember attendance reports. First, we'll start off with Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control. I don't believe there's anybody here for that. Orange County Sanitation District.
Okay. March was a busy month. I attended the board meeting on February 27th, and the items discussed included an approval of a sale of surplus property in Garden Grove and annexation of a small area of Lake Forest to the district. And we had confidential discussions with the labor negotiator. We're now in labor negotiations with five bargaining units at the sanitation district. My objective of representing Villa Park is to... in these negotiations is to ensure that we have an efficient and reliable operation of the district while containing our costs. Then, on March 4th, we had a Building Steering Committee, and that was on March 4th. The district must relocate the administration building. It's located in Fountain Valley, just off the 405 freeway, but we need to locate it off the existing grounds to provide more room for treatment works. A new administration building to be located across Ellis Street is currently under design, and to provide oversight, I championed the formation of a ad hoc Building Steering Committee. And using our city council chambers here as an example or as a model, I championed that we designed this new facility to facilitate community use. This facility here is, you know, we use it once a month for council meetings, but it's in regular use virtually every day of the year. But this suggestion has been supported by the board, and will now... the design now includes large meeting facilities for various public groups. On March 6th, I chaired the Operations Committee, and at that meeting, we approved the upgrades to the electrical system at Plant 2 to protect our plant reliability. Sewerage treatment plants have to operate 24/7 totally reliably. People don't stop flushing their toilets, so they need to operate. So, anyway, we improved some upgrades to our electrical system. We also approved a study to identify active seismic faults at the plant in Huntington Beach. This information will be critical in the design and upgrade of the facilities to, again, ensure plant reliability. And finally, we recommended a $35 million budget increase for our Headworks Rehabilitation Project. The total budget for this project will amount to $406 million. The current Headworks, this is the system of pipes and valves, where all the pipelines coming from the entire district come down to the... enter the sewage treatment plant down in Fountain Valley. The area that's... that we received sewage from goes all the way from basically El Toro Road to the LA County Line and all the way up towards Prado Dam. So, basically, it's, I think, a couple of million people that are served, and it's a very complex, very expensive structure, but it's nearing the end of its useful... useful life. It's about fifty years old now. The population has expanded quite a bit. And also, the, well, anyway, the, so this, the system needs to be replaced, and it needs to be, it's like the, doing heart surgery, because this system of valves and pipes needs to continue to operate without a hit during this whole process. So, it's an expensive and very complex project. On the eighteenth of March, I attended the Board Steering Committee. And again, we were, discussed labor negotiations with our five, labor, the labor negotiations, negotiations that are ongoing with our five bargaining units and provided our lead negotiator direction. Finally, I'll be touring the new Orange County Sanitation District Sludge Dewatering Facility in Fountain Valley. Previously, sludge was dewatered before shipment off-site, basically to Arizona and elsewhere, by belt presses. This is an old technology, and it's a technology that has been used at the sewage treatment plant for, for some decades. The new facility uses six inch, six-foot diameter drum centrifuges. And these new drum centrifuges are not only more reliable, but they reduce the water content in the sludge, which reduces the number of trucks and also the, the water content so that it's, it reduces our cost for disposal of the, the solid waste. So, that's my report. If there are any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Next up is the Orange County Fire Authority. I attended two meetings this particular month. The lion's share of the activity was handled in closed session and dealt with the Irvine, hopefully reincorporation into the Fire Authority and the negotiations surrounding that. Obviously, that is still ongoing, and I would say the vast majority of it is closed session, except for what, of course, you're reading in the Orange County Register or other news organizations. But nothing has been finalized. I'd like to have, I'd like to postpone further comment on that until there's a quote-unquote "deal done," until the, the various entities have agreed and voted and approved the final resolution of that. There were a few other matters, including some fleet services, fleet service issues as well as four oh one A benefit packages for executive management. But the lion's share, again, was, had to do with, I should say, with the City of Irvine and the role with the Fire Authority. And that's all I have to report. Orange County Library Advisory Board.
No meeting.
City Schools Advisory.
So, the City Schools Advisory with the district, different from the, I'm just making sure I'm clear. Is that the, the same meeting we just had?
That you just had?
Yes. Okay. Because there was the other one for the whole that, that they didn't have this month, and so I'd, sorry for my confusion. So, we did meet this last week and talked a lot about what the, how the organizations that are involved in the city interact with schools. There was a lot of great discussion about projects that are in the works and what's coming up. I think I mentioned last month about, when we talked in the, the bigger meeting about the plans for the, the track and what's happening with the, that's being held closed a little bit longer. There's only certain organizations that are available to use the track right now, and that, that'll be reopened as soon as it's ready. And there are a couple of other things that are happening at the school. One will be the, the closing of the gates along Santiago, installing physical gates at the open fences right there to give the campus some more protection and security there. The idea being that those are closed during school hours, so we don't have people wandering onto campus. We've had some problems in the past. We had some discussion about incidents that we would love to prevent, and that gates will go a measure towards helping with that. And the only thing, we did talk briefly about the Campus Care Day that they had this past weekend at the school, at the high school. I hear that went very well, and that's my report.
Any update on the track?
I mentioned the tracks, the, the track is closed a little bit longer right now, and that as soon as it-
Right. Any timeframe? How far that's gonna go?
I don't have the exact time now.
Okay. All right.
Do you know what is yet to be done before they can open the track?
I don't have a full report on that.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate your attendance and your report. Community development. I'd be happy to. I sat in on behalf of Councilmember Colacott, and we dealt with a number of issues. I was under the impression you were gonna provide a report as the standing member.
Sorry.
But I'm happy to, to talk a little bit about it. We had some conditional use permit issues that we discussed. We had, thankfully, some community participation in the process, but go ahead, feel free.
Well, we had two CUPs that are gonna be heard this, this evening, so I think that's all there is to report.
Okay. We'll, we'll hear more about it later. Thank you. Friends of the Villa Park Library.
At a meeting March seventh, yeah, March seventh is correct. Attended by Shawna Byrd and various members of the Villa Park Friends of the Library, talked about some of the things that Shawna mentioned, the summer reading program and Earth Day, the recycled bags project, March twenty-second. So, the other thing I really wanted to hit and make sure people knew about with Friends of the Villa Park Library is the Amazon Smile Program. You can sign up with your Amazon account to link your purchases so that the Friends of the Villa Park Library can get a portion of the proceeds. It really helps out. It's a, a small amount that each person contributes. It's no cost to you, and it really helps in the long run. So, if you go over to the library and pick up, they have a little piece of paper about the Amazon Smile Program, sign up. Let your dollars do a little extra work for the community.
Excellent report. Thank you. Infrastructure Management Advisory.
No meeting. We'll be meeting on Thursday, I believe it is.
Thursday? Okay. Thank you. Investment Advisory.
No meeting.
Okay. And Law Enforcement Advisory, no meeting. I think next meeting is in April, unless I'm mistaken. Villa Park Community Services Foundation.
The Foundation met on February the twenty-seventh. The new board member that was approved at the last council meeting, Tamison Reinheimer, assumed her position on the board and is now the government's chair for the, for the, for the Foundation. So, we're excited about that. And tonight, on the agenda, we have two new potential board member nominees that will be presented later on in the agenda. We're still continuing to plan events this year. August the twenty, oh, it's the August second, there is a planned concert in the park, and we'll have ABBA Band playing great music, so look forward to everybody coming out for that. And every day is Membership Day for us. So, we encourage everybody in the community to become a part of the Foundation and do, and be a part of some of the wonderful things that the Foundation's doing here in the community and concert with what we're trying to accomplish as a community. So, look forward to it.
Thank you for your report. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Opportunities will also be provided for public comment on each agenda item. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and thirty minutes for all comments. Steve, do we have any?
We have no general public comments. We have a number of item-specific requests.
Thank you. Next up, public hearings. Now, we will move into our agendized public hearings. Our first hearing is the review to waive and reading in full of all ordinances and resolutions on the agenda. I will open the meeting. We have a staff report on this.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, as you've mentioned, a way to have more efficient city council meetings. We basically waive the reading in full of all ordinances, resolutions, and meeting minutes, and for the sake of time, we move forward. So, we would recommend approval for the monthly item.
Any questions, councilmembers? Anyone here to speak on this? Thank you. Hearing no discussion. I will close the public hearing. Is there a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Second.
Please record your vote.
Passive five, five zero vote.
Next up is Item Four, the Conditional Use Permit, number twenty nineteen dash zero one. This Conditional Use Permit is with respect to the property at nine two 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 Loma, and do we have a staff report on that?
Right. This, I'll defer to Ray Pasqua just a second to provide the report. At the end, I would say that we do have a number of public comments, and I did forward a number of emails that we received to the council, just for the record. One from Mr. Brad Reese, and we also, from Lorna Ross, we received emails objecting to the CUP. So, I would just, for the record, have those two there. So, Ray, why don't you go?
I think the addresses are confused. I've got the one at Loma on here. Are we dealing with Loma?
Oh, I'm sorry. Right. Okay. Well, I do, the night, the Loma one is, I'm sorry, Lorna Ross was, Brad Reese was not. He's the next CUP, so.
Correct. That's what I recall. That's okay. It's okay. They're right next to one another.
The one at ninety-one, the resident lives at ninety-one fifty-two Loma, and she's, Lorna is, is objected to it, but now let Ray make a presentation.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. The item before you this evening for your consideration is a Conditional Use Permit application that involves nine, ninety-two twenty-two Loma Street, located in the E four zoning district. Currently, this property is improved with a single-family detached home with a, an attached two-car garage that was constructed in the early nineteen sixties. Specifically, the Conditional Use Permit application is a twofold request for approval to exceed the maximum allowable garage space of four, and the request is to construct a nine-car garage, and also to exceed the maximum allowable height for garage doors of eight feet or more for two sets of double-wide garage doors and a single-wide garage door at fourteen feet. The property owner has submitted a preliminary site plan, floor plan, and building elevations to the city that proposes to attach the nine-car garage to the main residence. Based on the site plan, floor plan, the existing two-car garage will be converted to a living space, also added as a powder room and office, and of course, the nine-car garage. As depicted on the site plan, floor plan that you shall, you should all have, Garage One and Garage Two will each accommodate four of the property owner's personal vehicles, and Garage Three will be used to store the property owner's recreational vehicle. Garage One and Garage Two are designed like regular garage that can accommodate two passenger vehicles side by side. The difference is that it can accommodate two additional vehicles in a tandem fashion. So, you have two of those types of garages. The building elevation drawings show how the new garage spaces will appear as viewed from Loma Street, and what will be seen are two sets of sixteen-foot wide, double-wide garage doors, sectional doors, at eight feet in height. Those are the garage doors. And one twelve-foot wide sectional garage door at fourteen feet in height. Architecturally, the property owner and applicant designed the addition to blend in with the existing residence in style and color and type of material. Before you, you should each have a revised building elevation drawing that shows the facade of the new garages, which provides a building offset, if you will, to break up the linear appearance of the structure, a more articulated roof line, the application of enhanced stone veneer at the base of the structure to de-emphasize the vertical dimension of the, the building, and the use of grid-style windows for the garage doors. City staff reviewed and found that the proposed remodel in addition complies with all of the development standards for the zone in which it is located, including setback, site coverage, height, and size of structure. This Conditional Use Permit was presented to the Community Development Committee on March fourth, and in advance of the meeting, city staff sent out courtesy notice letters to the adjacent property owners. The, the letter provided the scope of the project, a description of the Conditional Use Permit request, the date, time, and location of the CDC meeting. The meeting was attended by Committee Chair, Councilwoman Miles, and alternate committee member, Mayor Russini. Steve and I were also in attendance. For this item, the property owners, John and Nina Sarkaria, and the applicant Greg Beinlick, we're also, Craig Beinlick, excuse me, were also present to respond to any questions or comments about the project. In addition, City resident Sergio Stone was present to express his opposition to the project. Mr. Stone was concerned that the project is out of character with the neighborhood and that it would generate more traffic and pollution as a result of having a nine-car garage. In addition to Mr. Stone's comment, I noted to the CDC staff, committee members that I spoke to Steve Yolen, who I believe is a, a neighbor of the applicant property owner, and also expressed the same concerns that the, the design of the, the nine-car garage would be out of character with the, with the neighborhood. Following a discussion between the committee members, city staff, and the public, the committee members voted to forward this Conditional Use Permit application to a full city council for consideration. In accordance with city zoning ordinance, city staff posted and mailed public hearing notices ten calendar days before this meeting. To date, staff has not received any additional comments for or against this item, and that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time. The property owner and the applicant is also here this evening to respond to any questions about the project. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions of staff?
I have one.
Mayor, before we go, you might, you do have a public member, Mr. Sergio Stone, that has to speak. You may want to open up for public comments.
By all means. Absolutely. Prior to Mr. Stone, let's let the applicant say his two cents, and then let Mr. Stone speak to the matter as well. And then, Ms. Miles.
I'm John Sarkaria, a resident of the city for some time. My goal in building a garage at the site, my current Suburban and my Avalanche don't fit in a twenty-foot garage. So, our idea was to build a four-car garage that was deeper. Unfortunately, I think for semantics, because it, I guess there's a certain depth at which it becomes a two tandem parking garage, it's considered an eight-car garage. When we initially submitted the CUP statement, we actually said, "We're building a four-car garage with an RV garage." And I think unfortunately, this has gotten turned into a nine-car garage, which sounds horrible. And, you know, if there's significant community opposition to a nine-car garage, it's possible we could decrease the size of the garage on the two-car garage to where it's only considered a four-car garage. To me, it's just semantics, and I think that a lot of people are caught up in the semantics. When we were, when we attended the last meeting, we heard some comments that it looked like a strip mall. And what we tried to do to respond to that is, is create the, I think you already have a copy of the color rendering. So, we tried to create a color rendering, and I guess I'd be happy to pass that around if that's okay.
Please. By all means.
Anybody want to take a look at that?
We're neighbors across the street. We're very concerned about it.
We're very concerned about it.
There are two copies there. If we have, anybody else wants to take a look at?
I think that was the first thing. The second thing, so I felt that we were asking for basically a four-car garage. We wanted a slight increase in the size of the garage door because I, I have a Jeep and it's tall enough to where it doesn't fit on a standard height garage door, so with an eight-foot door, it allows me to drive my Jeep into the garage. Maybe I should get smaller tires, I guess you could argue that.
John.
You could say I should get an electric Jeep.
John, John, John. Ladies and gentlemen, the audience, please keep the discussion and dialogue to a minimum. Please, go ahead.
So the, the other thing we wanted was an RV garage, so I could put my RV inside, so it wouldn't have to sit outside and I find it to be somewhat unsightly when it's outside. There were other RV garages in Villa Park that I have pictures of with addresses on the back. I'd be happy to show those to council if you guys want to look at them. There's at least four that we were able to find in Villa Park that have RV garages on the premises. I also know that in the city of Villa Park, there's a motorcycle museum. I know that there's another residence I'm aware of that has a six-car garage, so I don't, I don't necessarily feel like I'm doing something crazy to the neighborhood, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Stone? If you would like to speak, please present a blue card to our city manager. I'm speaking of another hand that was in the audience. Go ahead, sir.
I'm Sergio Stone, I live in eleven Estates Drive. The mayor and members of the council. I am here to urge you to reject this building to be built in our city. It's completely out of character to anything I can find in this city. I cannot believe that the planning commission has approved the building of this enormous structure, a nine-car garage plus RV plus an office plus a bathroom. This is a commercial building. This is a building where you can sell things, you can have manufacturing, who knows what you can do once the building is there. I drove around Villa Park and I could not find anything like this. Make no mistake, this will be a very serious precedent. This is not an addition, as it was called by the planning committee. It is a building in itself. The addition is the house that is there. So this is against all we know in Villa Park. It's not an addition to a house. It's a building that has attached a house, completely out of character. Who knows what this building can become tomorrow? One of these nice gentleman moves his collection away. Anything can be built there. You already approve it. It's not a house. I believe that you should really reject this proposition. I have lived in Villa Park since nineteen seventy-eight and I have never seen something like this. I urge you to consider the rejection of this proposal. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Steve, do we have any other cards?
Excuse me, I don't have any other comments, but I believe there are some people here that.
Okay.
They're on the back counter in blue. Yes. If you just want to come up and identify yourself, we can do that.
Sir, just go ahead and step forward, since you haven't filled out a card at this time, and just identify yourself by name and your address, please.
I'm Steve Yolan, I'm the one who contacted you initially. Initially, I was okay with this concept of building, you know, a larger structure for our neighbor because it's a neighborly thing to do is to support your neighbors, but after careful thought, I decided to change my mind. I just felt that a nine-car garage along our street just didn't make sense. We moved to Villa Park, not in nineteen seventy-eight, but we moved in nineteen ninety-six, so we've been here a long time and we're catacornered approximately to this, this structure. And I, I do have a question if it's okay for the homeowner. Do you live in that facility, that home now?
I, I did live in that facility and I'm not working back.
But currently, you don't live there?
I currently do not live in that structure.
Okay, so that, I think that's an important point because he's talking about storing his cars there or in his RV there, but he doesn't live there now. It sounds like he will there at some point, but we don't know when that point will take place. It's disturbing to me to move to a community. We moved here because I love Villa Park. I like the fact that most of the structures are older. I, I don't like when people tear down structures and build McMansions here. I think it sort of ruins the spirit of this community. I'm grateful for opportunity to be able to address all of you here. It's the first time I've been to a meeting like this, I probably should come to more of them, but this city means an awful lot to me. We raised our kids here, we plan to retire here and grow old here. It concerns me that something like this could occur on our street. One of the issues is it is an eyesore, I think even though I think they've done a nice job of camouflaging this large unit, but nonetheless, to me, I'm going to drive by this every day on the way to my work and every day on my way home and I, when I walk the dogs and so on and so forth. I do think this will lower the property values along that street. I don't think it's going to increase the property values. If we were to buy a home and, in a neighborhood and we drove by something like this, it'd be disturbing to me. And I'm, I'm, it's hard for me because these people are very nice and my wife knows them. I know them relatively well and it's hard to go up against someone who you're friendly with. But this is of great concern to me because it's true. I mean, they may not move in this home or maybe they will and when they sell it, someone else will move in this home. It seems like nine cars, I know it's sort of a misnomer or a, call it what you will, but it seems to me that that's an awful lot of square footage. I mean, we have a three-car garage and we live with it, we had a suburban, we made it work in a typical garage. I just feel as if that this is something that the community does not need. It does set a terrible precedence, once this happens, something else will happen and then the community changes dramatically. I do, I'll end with this, I love this city. We could move other places, I choose not to. This place means so much to me and I feel that this would change their street and the community forever, so those are my words.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Sir? Please.
Hi there. My name is Bill Walsh, Mayor Rusini and council members. I live across the street from the property in question at nine two one one Loma Street and originally, they came and asked for my signature, mentioned that they were going to build a four-car garage is, is what, how I understood it. And I saw, you know, a smaller rendering of it and it looked pretty nice on the small rendering, black and white. But as I learned more, I got the notice from you guys about the nine-car garage, that kind of set off some red flags and I talked to some other neighbors and kind of decided that I wasn't, no longer, you know, I no longer was supporting it. I feel that a nine-car garage is just way out of character for the neighborhood. I have a family, we have three kids, we live across the street. We're concerned about if they're going to be renting the property out to tenants, you know, like room boarding type of situation. I'm in real estate, so I'm kind of familiar with some of this, I've seen it before. In Orange Park Acres, they've had a few of these and it, it really can hurt the neighborhood, so I'm very concerned about that. Also, just, you know, they don't, like you said, they don't live there, so who knows if they're going to really move back in or if they sell the property, then what happens to the next owner? Is the next owner going to be somebody that, you know, is storing cars or are they going to be renting out rooms? So this, these are my chief concerns. I hate to do this, I normally would want to support a neighbor, you know, I would, I don't want to be that kind of guy, but, you know, we've lived there for eight years, we plan on living there for the rest of our lives and once it's built, there's no going back, so I really think we need to, you know, answer some of these questions before we move any forward on, on any of that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have anyone else? Sir?
My name is Randy Tool, I'm in nine one eight two Loma, so three houses up from the, the project site. So I'm trying to process this in real time. I, I know the owner, they're very good people, they're dog lovers, we see them all the time on dog walks, so it's kind of hard to do this, but I've been in, in Villa Park for seven years. I came from Fountain Valley, right across the street from the sewage plant. You know, Loma has, for better or worse, it's got kind of a sixties feel to it and, and I really like it. That's what attracts us to, attracted us to that particular house when we relocated after twenty-five years in Fountain Valley. I know things change and you can't stop progress and I, and I have no intent of stopping people from improving their property, but I just feel that based on what I'm seeing, this is out of scale and out of character. I, I was thinking on the way over, it just looks like something that, like the Jolly Green Giant would need if he was to locate on Loma Street. It just looks a little bit out of scale, it would change the character and I, I think for this particular design and use, I would have a concern. I feel like it would diminish the, the feel of Loma and so I, I do have concerns.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any further public comment on this matter? Please.
We'd be happy to go re-approach the plans and decrease the depth of the garages so that they would be considered four-car garages.
Okay.
If that meets their council's approval.
Thank you. Thank you. Council members? Council, Councilwoman Miles?
Mayor?
Oh, I beg your pardon. By all means.
Hi, I'm Carol Gilbert at nine two two one Loma Street. I'm directly across the street from the property. The folks are lovely, but they moved and they're up on Valley now and I would have to look at that monstrosity every day. We have horse property, we've lived here for thirty-five years and I just can't see looking at that every day. It was just, our street is not set up for that. And I agree with all these folks. I love our street, I love everybody around, but that is not, that's just too big of, you know, buildings. It's a large property, ours is a large property and I don't want to ruin it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else?
Question?
No, I'm good, thank you.
So, question, process question. He indicated he wanted to go back and make changes, do we just defer this to another time?
Well, it would depend because what those changes would entail, for instance, because there were two elements, as Ray mentioned, one would be the number of spaces or the depth and the other was the, the door, maximum door height was the second part of it. So to the extent that it would make sense to go back and redo the whole plan, that's certainly an option, you could continue it till the next meeting or, you know, what, what might not be considered something to change.
Correct me if I'm wrong, he's not changing the width, he's changing the depth.
The depth, but the height is still, the second element is the, right, Ray, am I correct? So the second element was the height exception.
That would be the height of the door and because it's going to be reduced to four parking garage spaces, then that would be another component of it that needs to be considered.
Do we have other homes in Villa Park that are fourteen-foot high?
I believe so, yeah, we just, we considered one just recently for the Ferris residents.
Ferris residents and I believe there's one on Abbott too, I believe.
The photos show there's at least four others, yeah.
These are all Villa Park homes, sir. Gentlemen, just so he can see them. I believe staff can provide the location.
To the mayor pro tem's process question, I mean, this is subject to your review as a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is required because of the various size issues here. That in large part is a discretionary decision and from my eye, it is all to a certain degree interrelated, so if there was a redesign, that may impact how you view one of the approvals, right? So if, as the applicant suggested, they'd be willing to do a redesign, maybe the easiest approach is to have them submit that redesign so it can be sent around and contemplated by you all and then come back at the next meeting.
Mayor?
By all means.
A couple of questions about the, just to have some discussion in terms of if the property area where they want to put the Ray's garage weren't improved and they just parked their RV there, we, we, there'd be no prohibition against that, right? So I guess then it goes back to the residents, would you rather have a garage that had the RV in it with the door that was a little bit bigger or would you rather have an RV sitting there all the time? So that one concept to keep in mind, I guess the other is in terms of having additional garage space behind cars, I can see if you were really wide and you had lots of cars that were coming, you had eight cars side by side, that would present an image that I don't think any of us want, but if the garage is a little deeper, I, I don't know that you can even really tell, we, from the outside, whether, whether they built it the same depth or a little bit further deeper, you're not going to know the difference. So I, I'm just curious about how we proceed from here, just keeping in mind, I, I hear that, the arguments and I hear the, the, the arguments against this, but I'm trying to picture if they do a little bit of tweaking so that they don't need our approval, they can still build something higher, bigger, you know, equally, that our restrictions in Villa Park don't prohibit them from doing, and most of the work that they want to do, it's really just about a couple of things that I want you to keep in mind. So I, that's my impression of the, the situation and I want to make sure that we're all cognizant of the differences between what they're asking for and what they could do.
Thank you. Councilman McCollough, do you have anything?
Well, the comment regarding the, the depth of the garage, I have a twenty-foot deep garage. The two additional garages that are being proposed are side-by-side, you know, double width garages and they're forty, so that, that would be, appear to be a tandem and I've seen other garages that are marketed on the MLS where they identify tandem garages and they're forty feet deep, so it looks and smells and quacks like a tandem garages. So that, it appears that these would be, each would be four-car garages. I think that there are a couple of exceptions to our zoning code. One is that was identified by staff is that there, this is for nine car or nine vehicles and I think that's an, exceeds the number of spaces that's allowed under the, under the zoning code without a conditional use permit.
Yeah, would be five or more would require a conditional use permit.
Okay, so this is an exception to our established zoning code. The other is we've got a fourteen-foot high garage door. Now, we do have several RV garages, in fact, we approved one at our last council meeting. These are again discretionary, this is, this is an exception to our established zoning code. You know, the RV garage issue has, has concerned me. We do have several of these around the city. Some of them, you can tell were designed by architects and actually are integrated quite well with the, with the main structure. Couple that come in, come to mind, there's one on, up towards the end of Gianna Street. I've walked by that, that home a number of times and it wasn't until recently that I noticed there was actually an RV garage there, but it was, the way the architect designed it, it was integrated in with the design of the primary residence. It was stepped back, probably half the distance back from the front of the house, so it was not very apparent. There's another one on Adams Ranch Road. Again, it's stepped back, it's actually probably just at the backside of the main residence and it looks great, but I'm sure we're all aware of some that are just butt ugly. And I think if the, what I'd like to encourage the residents to do, I think, you know, I can't support approving this as it is. What I've seen in this council over the years is that typically if adjacent residents don't support a project or a conditional use permit, we take the adjacent residents words, we give them a lot of weight because they're the ones that are going to have to live with it. But that doesn't preclude the applicant from going back to the drawing board and working with their adjacent neighbors, particularly the ones that are, have, have expressed concern, and see if they can come up with something that is acceptable to everybody. and see if they can come up with something that is acceptable to everybody. And that's what we should be looking for, is something that everybody can support. I'd like to see the applicant be able to park his car collection. I have a couple of cars myself and, you know, find a way to have an RV garage. But I think some careful thought needs to be put into the design of the structure, perhaps engaging a skilled architect that can find a way to integrate it so that it's, it looks like it belongs there. I agree with the, at least from what I've seen of the plans, is that it looks like a lot of garage for a residential area and I don't know that I would want to be across the street from a whole bank of garage doors. So, I would, I would have, I cannot support the project as proposed, particularly given the opposition by the adjacent.
Might just to point a clarification, I wasn't saying that he wasn't asking for this CUP. What I was saying is that if he submitted the look of it, if you had 20-foot-deep garages, it, from the outside to the neighbors, we couldn't prevent him from doing the same look on the front if he did the three garages that were only 20 feet deep. It would look the same as 40-foot-deep garages, three of them right there. And we, there's nothing, right, there's no exception to that rule that we, we could, we couldn't stop that at all. You would end up with the same thing. It just wouldn't help him at all. It would just stop him from being able to use it as effectively. He could do storage in the back for his cars in a different way, but, and again, we couldn't do anything to stop that. This is only really purely for convenience for a homeowner, not in a way to stop something from going forward that we can't stop the look of. The other part of it, you're right about the larger garage door, that is something that, you know, requires our approval and we can stop that and that's something that we could do, but it then wouldn't prevent him from just parking the RV there and it being a different type of visual interference. So, this covers it and then helps the homeowner. I understand the other arguments. I was just pointing out that when we think about this, we have to think, keep in mind what we're actually stopping him from doing versus what he could do anyway and keep that in mind.
I think at least, I think more than one resident expressed concern with the number of spaces, which again is part of the, as a CUP as well.
But, correct me if I'm wrong, if he built a separate storage area in the back, that it was just designated as storage and put cars back there, that's, they're not, no longer identified as garage and he can still do that, right?
That's a question for our planning manager, if he could build a separate structure, if he'd have enough lot coverage to...
That was my understanding, so I thought, well, I guess it's, to Mr. Sarkaria's point, it is a matter of semantics at that point and convenience.
Semantics?
Sure.
Let's hold the discussion now. Ray?
Well, to respond to Councilman, yeah, we would need to know what the plans are for and if it's identified as storage, whether it's for belongings or, we would know that it would be a space for garages and if it exceeds the amount, then it would trigger the need for a CUP.
Okay, I'm wrong, then, thank you.
Yeah, the clue would be, you know, if they paved the driveway to the, to the separate unit, then yeah, that would be a clue to us that it would be for storing vehicles.
Got it.
And that would be considered garages.
My point of reference for this is over on Abbott Lane. If you look at the house that's over there, it's, it's very large and it has a similar design in terms of the garages. Also has the RV garage on the end, designed similar to the prints that we're seeing here and that was approved by council.
Yeah, there've been a number of instances within our community and there's photographic evidence of that where RV garages and certainly four and five-car garages and even more have been approved within Villa Park. I, in my humble opinion, I think the most successful ones of those are staggered, are set back from the street. The ones that face the least amount of opposition really took that into consideration. I'm going to go ahead and close public comments on this and given the offer of the applicant and the significant opposition of the neighbors, I think it's important, and I'm going to offer a motion that we continue this matter until next month. At the very least, perhaps even the following month, depending on how you want to word this, and give the applicant an opportunity to work with his neighbors specifically in opposition and see if there isn't some sort of compromise they can make, whether that's employing the services of a licensed architect, staggering the RV garage, whatever the neighbors feel would be in all of their mutual interest. We're not a design board up here. City of Villa Park is not a homeowners association and we're not going to have an architectural design committee anytime in the near future. And I think it's important that the applicant and the neighbors and staff work together to try to find a common solution if there's one to be sought. But I think it's obvious that we do have examples of these types of garages within Villa Park.
Right, that's, I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay.
So, just so I'm clear on the motion, because this is a public hearing item, it has to be continued to a date certain? We continue till April 23rd unless we so need...
Correct.
...time per the applicant.
Maybe two months because it'll take some time to...
Ray, what do you think? One month, two months?
One month's fine.
Okay.
Okay. One month it'll be unless the applicant or staff states otherwise. Okay?
I'd like to make one amendment that before the applicant returns, that he gets written approval agreement by the residents that have attended and expressed concerns.
So, we can't, Councilman, require approval of third parties because you are the decision-maker at the end of the day?
Well, support then, not approval, support.
The same thing.
I don't think they can do that.
So, I would recommend that against that amendment.
Instead of requiring it, can we, I mean, I think they probably want to, but...
How about we encourage it?
Right. Encourage it, okay.
Okay. All right. Motion clear?
So, the motion is to continue the public hearing on this item until April 23rd.
Okay. And we have a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Passes by a four-to-one vote with Mayor Pro Tem Pitts voting no.
Item five, conditional use permit number 2019-02 at 9402 Villa Vista Way. I'm going to now open the hearing. Steve, staff, can I please have the staff report?
Okay, I'll let Ray, I'll let Ray handle, my voice is going.
Thank you, Steve. Good evening, Mayor, member of City Council. The item before you this evening is a conditional use permit application. It involves 9402 Villa Vista Way located in the E4 zoning district. Presently, the subject property, which is almost two acres or 82,000 square feet in size, is improved with a single-family detached home with an attached three-car garage with access from Villa Vista Way. The request is to permit an independent landscape company to utilize a portion of the rear yard area of this property located immediately adjacent to Meets Avenue for storing personal vehicles, three small work-related trucks as well as landscape tools that are secured in a non-permanent freestanding storage containers. The days and hours of operation for this business is Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. The day-to-day operations involve the employees arriving at the property and their personal vehicle via a driveway that's off of Meets Avenue. Their vehicles are parked in a designated area, then the work trucks are loaded up with landscape-related equipment and they leave for the day. The applicant explains that from the time the employees arrive on the property to the time they leave is approximately 15 minutes or less and there's no business activity that takes place on the property. At the end of the day, the work trucks are parked on the property, the equipment is unloaded and stored in the container. The applicant gets into their personal vehicles and leaves the property again via Meets Avenue. As noted earlier, the property is located in the E4 zoning district, which is a residential district and the proposed use is not permitted by right. This is the reason why the applicant applied for a conditional use permit to, to see if this use can be considered. Generally, conditional use permits are considered, are to consider certain uses that may or may not be compatible with the area depending on the specifics of the particular use. In the case of the subject property, it abuts single-family residence with a tennis court to the north, Assumi Farms to the south and Meets Avenue to the east. Based on the operational characteristics of the proposed use and the adjacent land uses, city staff does not think that, or anticipate that there will be any negative impacts on the surrounding neighborhoods. This conditional use permit was presented to the Community Development Committee on March 4th. In advance of the meeting, city staff mailed courtesy notice letters to the adjacent neighbors. The, again, like the other one, the courtesy notice letter provided a brief description of the conditional use permit request, also the date, time and location of the CDC meeting. The meeting was attended by committee chair and alternate committee member, Mayor Rucini. And Steve and I were there at that meeting as well. Also, a city resident, Mr. Sergio Stone, was present to speak against the proposed use. He noted that the subject property is zoned residential and that commercial uses or any type of commercial businesses should be prohibited from establishing themselves on residential property. Following the discussion, committee members voted to bring it before City Council for Public hearing notices were mailed out in accordance with the zoning ordinance. To date, city staff, as Steve mentioned, did receive emails from residents in the city expressing their opposition to this CUP request. The property owner did submit signed letters of support from the adjacent neighbors and that pretty much concludes my report. At this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
The applicant, Jovan Savant, has submitted a sheet here. She is only interested in speaking if there are questions or to answer questions, but she is in the audience.
What questions do we have? Why are we doing this?
Well, if we could ask the...
Yeah, can we please have, if somebody has a question or would like to speak on this matter, please submit a card or come to the podium, provide us with your name and your address. We have the applicant here. Who would like to speak first, ladies?
Well, I'm going to ask a question.
Okay. All right, I think the young lady there in the black jacket, would you like to say something, ma'am? I believe she's deferring to you.
She's referring to you.
Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, give us your name and address.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Colleen Cho at 2183 B-Drive. We got our letters rather late, but that's all right. It was within the 10-day limit. And what they've done, I believe, is are you renting the house? Someone...
Ma'am, please direct your questions to staff and, and then if there's a clarification provided that needed...
Put the microphone down.
Pull the microphone down? Thanks.
Put this down?
Yes, ma'am. If you have a question, please direct it towards staff.
Okay.
And if staff is unfamiliar, they can ask the question.
There was a concern, okay, there was a concern with all of our neighbors that the house was being rented and also we had a discussion maybe 10, 15 years ago with the property of the Assumis, which I hope many of you remember. And at that time, you had, City Council had decided that it was not appropriate to put anything in there at that time. And we have electrical lines that go through there and if this is going to be a, another landscaping business, is it, who paid then for the property to be divided and so that you don't even see the back part of the property from the street? You see it from Meets. So, somebody must have paid to put the beautiful brickwork in and the walls and wonderful things like that. And what's going to happen with the cars coming in and the dust and the noise and all the kids between Lutheran and Serrano that go to school there? We already know that that area has a huge rat problem, sorry, but it does. And there's still, from the last rains, nobody's come to clean out, there's a big gutter in there and it's still there. No one's come to clean that one out yet. They're coming into an area that is heavily populated at that time of the morning, people going, and people taking their children to school. And then at night, at, I think it was 5 o'clock I saw, you have the same issue, people coming home. Meets is a very, very dangerous street. We had, had many, many, many accidents and deaths on that street. And have, have they, are they living there? And secondly, are they, how are they going to handle the chemicals and, you know, Roundup just was taken off the market or should be taken off the market? How are they going to handle all this and do they have a business? Have they asked you for a business license?
We'll be happy to answer those questions. Do you have anything further?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ray, can you address some of her concerns to the best of your ability, to the degree that you have those answers? And if not, maybe we could ask the applicant.
I'm trying to remember all the questions. I don't, I don't know the, where the gutter is on the, on the property.
Okay.
But we'll certainly follow up on that to see if it, if it is within the public right-of-way, then it would be the city's responsibility to clean it out. But if it's on private property, then it would be the private property owner that would need to clean it out. But I'm not aware of a gutter that traverses that property right now.
Okay. I think one of the other questions was, was, is the applicant live there? It's my understanding they, they do, correct me if I'm wrong?
Yes, it is.
Do they own and live there?
It was from...
I would assume they do.
Down.
Pardon me?
There is a gutter there.
Okay, but we're moving on to the next question. So, I'll get to that.
I believe the, I believe the applicant does reside at the, at the home.
Thank you. And I'm hearing from Mayor Pro Tem Pitts as well as this nice lady here. Do they have a business license?
That I don't know, but there is a...
Ray, I can answer that.
Okay.
We have been unable to locate a business license at this point.
Thank you.
Can we hear from the applicant?
I have a question.
And I think there was another question about the toxic substances.
Yes.
Roundup, et cetera, just, I don't know if Ray was there.
Correct.
One of the provisions would be that no toxic or hazardous materials would be prohibited at all times on the property. That was condition number 18 on the, of the many.
Okay.
There's also a condition of approval as part of the resolution that requires the business to obtain a, and maintain a business license.
Yep. I'm going to go ahead and see if there's any...
I have a question. Okay. There's a, it says that there's a wall separating, and that, I think it was brought up by the resident, the adjacent resident, there's a wall. Is that a chain-link fence or is it a block wall or, what kind of wall is there between the, the commercial operation and the residence?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I was asking our planning director, he's, you've been to the property, correct?
I've been to the property, yes. Yes, and if, yeah, if the question's directed at me, yes, there is a, there is a chain-link fence with a green screen on it that separates or delineates the area that is used by this landscape company. landscape company. And I, it's probably the, the rear third of the property, if you will.
Okay. And this, they're currently operating this business at the back of the property, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. When the, is there, was there any permit required for the construction of that fence? And if so, was there a permit pulled?
I don't believe there's a permit required for a chain-link fence. It looks to me, from where I was looking at it, it's probably about five feet, five or six feet tall. I couldn't tell from where I was.
And it would be in the back of the property.
Is the, is there a permit required for a fence?
I believe it exceeds six, six feet or above, if that's, unless I'm mistaken.
Okay.
And if it's a, if it's a chain-link fence, if it's a masonry fence, it would be required. But I believe it's a masonry fence.
My experience is that for a fence, there is a permit required, but I just wanted to confirm. Are there any other permits that this facility is missing? Looks like they've got storage container and trash bins and so forth, is that...
No, that is not, they're not permitted, and that's why that we brought it forward, because it does not have those permits.
Is there a permit required for a, I think there was a porta potty, I thought, that was permanently installed?
Can you speak into the mic?
There's a porta potty adjacent to the driveway. Is that, is that a, is there, is that there regularly? And if so, if it's always there, is there a permit required for installing a porta potty in that manner, for a commercial use?
We're bringing this forward because it's not in compliance, councilman. They do not have the permits, and they need those permits, and that's one of the conditions that they would have to receive those and have those permits in place. We would have to go out in the facility, examine all the things that are happening there, and make sure that they're in compliance. But at this point in time, they don't have the approvals to do that from the get-go.
Okay. I'm trying to understand, how far out of compliance are they with the existing operation?
The fact that they're operating is, is out of compliance. I guess that's the, the major, would be the big home run, if you will.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to finish with a public comment. Anyone else like to speak on this? Sir, Mr. Stone, go ahead. Please, again, give us your name and address.
Sergio Stone at 11 Estates Drive. Mr. Mayor and council members, I think you have here a golden opportunity to show to the city your commitment to our city as it is. This is a commercial adventure. This is a business. The same thing that can happen in this huge building, no matter how deep it is, you are going to be able to have there a business. Any type of business is not in the spirit of our city. You have a golden opportunity to reject this project and to tell them that this is not a place to have this kind of business, or any kind of business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. One comment.
I have a comment.
Oh, oops. Okay.
My name is Jovan Savant, and I do live at 9402 Villa Vista Way. We have taken every precaution to make sure that the neighborhood is not affected in any way. If you could look at your plans there, we have built a driveway so that they're able to access it without causing any extra traffic on Meats. It causes no noise. My neighbors to the left, right, on my street and block, have no issues with this whatsoever. They actually support us. I have letters, I have, you know, letters of support from them. We're also right next to the farm that I know has been there for generations, but there is no activity being done on our premises as far as working. They're loading up equipment, they're going out into the city, it could be Villa Park, Orange, they just do Orange County. They come back in the afternoon, drop it off, and they go, I have four kids, I have a dog, there are no chemicals being stored there. We have a right-of-way from SCE, we got approval that we can go ahead and have those things there. So, that's basically it. We have been operating for more than a year, and we haven't had any complaints. And without the notices, I don't know if the neighbors would have even, even, you know, beside the ones next to us, if they would have even known. We started this off not knowing how to go about it. Once we found out we needed a CUP, we went ahead and started the process of trying to get all of that paperwork ready.
I'm sorry, could you say, oh, I apologize.
Go ahead.
Who did you, I just wanted a clarification. Who did you say you got approval from?
SCE, which is the...
I just didn't hear you.
Oh, okay.
They're under the high-tension wires.
Got it.
Yes.
I just didn't hear it.
So we do have an approval and conditions that we met, and we sent them all the information they needed for that.
Is the, is the landscape, or the, the landscape business, is that your business?
It is not my business, no. We rent that portion out to the landscape company. And we do have a chain-link fence that divides their portion from ours. And the green fence on the back is to keep neighbors, the neighborhood from peering in, I mean, to block our property. Our neighbors have a green screen on theirs for their, you know, their privacy, and that's what it's for.
Have you communicated with the neighbors across the street, across Meats?
I have not, and I haven't received any, you know, anything from them. We don't have any extra traffic coming down our block, not even in our neighborhood, because everything is on Meats.
Well, I know that we got two emails in opposition from residents that live on Mountain View, which is their backyards or side yards are against Meats. One of whom, Amanda and her husband, the Richards, they have a two-story, and they can see clearly into the yard. And then also Mr. and Mrs. Reese, who are here, they invited me to their home. Their bedroom, when you're standing in their bedroom, they can see, and conversely, anyone in the back lot can see straight into their bedroom.
Okay, but they're literally there two times a day, from maybe seven to seven fifteen, seven thirty, and then four thirty to five, between those hours to get in and get out.
Anything further, ma'am?
No. Thank you.
I have another question for them.
All right, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I just wanted to give Mr. Reese an opportunity. I know that he raised his hand, he's been waiting very patiently, and wanted to give him the opportunity to have his say. Sorry.
Mayor, city council members, thank you for hearing us. My wife Lisa and I, Brad and Lisa Reese, we live at 17761 Mountain View Circle. And we've lived in the city about 22 years, and our backyard has always been completely private. We don't have any drapes on our backyard windows because it's all private, you don't see anything. We do have Meats right behind our home, we do have a block wall fence, and you just can't see anything. However, when you go into our master bedroom, the trailers and the work trucks that have the tools, they're very visual. As Councilmember Miles had mentioned, she had offered to come over and take a look at the situation. Thank you for doing that. So I'll just list off a few of our concerns with this. First off, I was glad to see this letter come to us because this, I don't know if I call it a project, but this use of land has escalated. It started out a while ago, as the lady had mentioned, might have been a year ago or so. Started off kind of small, and it kind of grew, and it's been growing. It continues to grow. There's more traffic, more trucks, more trailers, toilet added, it's just gotten bigger. It is definitely an eyesore from our bedroom. So a few of the things I wrote down, one item that I'll bring up is a safety issue. Meats is a superhighway, and I think you guys know that, it's very, very fast. And Serrano Elementary, as you know, always has looked at options of how can we make traffic better, whatever. One of the options was put in a driveway at Meats. And the reason that got shot down is because of safety, it's just a superhighway back there. So I believe, and the residents that live on Villa Vista and have that Meats access, they do all have gates, and they do use them once in a blue moon, which I think is fine if they have special use or an RV or whatever. But to be using it daily on that superhighway, I think is dangerous. I think something is going to happen, people go very fast. Some other items I've made a note of is, on the support letter, the homeowner has gotten, all of those folks, I think there's four of them, they live on Villa Vista Way. When you live on Villa Vista Way, they're not impacted by this at all, because these lots are very big, they're almost two acres, they're very deep. So the people that live on Villa Vista, they don't know what's going on at the other end of Meats. Who's impacted really are, we have two homes on Mountain View, ours and our next-door neighbors, Roy and Amanda Richards. They wanted me to apologize if they couldn't come tonight, they're in opposition as well, but they had to make a choice of going to Serrano Elementary tonight for open house with their kid, or coming here and get that one out. So they, they mentioned to say sorry. So a few of the other things, you know, as it was said earlier, this is an E4, single-family residential zoning. This is clearly not the use of that land supposed to be, if you will. This has been in operations without permits, without permission, without anything. And, you know, now it's come to light that, wow, this is wrong. And we actually did want to speak of this a while back ago, but we just never really bothered until that letter came, so, oh, here's our chance to speak about it. There is a noise issue. Our neighbors right next to us, Roy and Amanda, they hear the noise worse than us because they have the two-story, and they have a bunch of windows, and they hear it. Their, their big complaint is it's too early in the morning and it's too loud.
And it lights off their dogs.
That's, yeah, their dogs go lit off in, in the morning and in the evening. Even though it seems like from our backyard, Meats to this property is, it seems like it's far away, it's not far away. It really isn't. Our bedroom is very close to Meats, and Meats is four lanes, and boom, it's right there. So it's really not far from our property at all. I also believe it would affect property values, it is an eyesore. If, if you stand in our master bedroom and look out the window, it's in your face, I mean, there's no way around it. One other issue my wife had mentioned, which I wasn't aware of, is in the morning after she showers, and, you know, she's had guys where...
7:00 AM.
They stand in the truck, you know, over there. They can, if, if she can see them standing in the truck, they can see her too. That's an issue.
You know, I mean...
Yeah, that, so that happened as well. So those basically are my comments, and I'd urge you guys to deny this use. We just feel it is not the right use for this residential area. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim was next.
When I, I went out and looked at the property Sunday, and it appeared to me that more than a third of that, that property was being utilized for this business. I also witnessed and saw buckets of plants stored there like a normal nursery. So it's, to me, it appeared almost way beyond what was currently being asked for, because those plants, those stored plants appeared to be closer to the home and not back around the storage facility itself. So it looked like someone's storing plants there. I could be wrong, but I'm just, that's what I saw.
Maybe you got it confused with the farm or the nursery a little further down, because there are no plants stored on the facility.
I saw the dumpster, I saw the, the, the storage facility, I saw the trucks there.
Those plants, oh, that's the weeds probably from our backyard from all the rains, but it's not more than a third of our yard, because we still have a lot of our yard space.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you've seen anything up, those are not plants, those are all the weeds from all the rain, and it's hard to keep up with that, because it's just been inundated with the rain.
Okay.
But there are no plants.
Thank you. Anything further?
So Mr. and Mrs. Reese, you don't find, looking at, out your bedroom window, at a porta potty and a trash bin as a romantic accessory? Yeah, yeah. I, I also read the email from the Johnsons, the Johnsons, and about the noise, and that's certainly a concern. When Villa Park was founded in 1962, the entire city was zoned E4, as you're aware. The, the whole philosophy or the whole culture of Villa Park from the very beginning was to minimize the amount of commercial. The, the shopping center that we're sitting in right now was a matter of real contention back in the late 60s, early 70s when it was built. People didn't even want a commercial center here. They didn't, in fact, they boycotted the original grocery store, Market Basket, that was here, because, and it went out of business because they didn't want commercial. And here we've got a much more rigorous, I guess you'd call it, commercial activity that's here, and I think it, I agree, it's out of character.
By all means.
Thanks. So I would just add that I would like to discourage residents from starting businesses without following the proper procedures, that we are a residential community, these are residential lots. Anybody going out and starting a business within their home or within their property is in the wrong. You're starting off on the, the, the wrong side of this issue. You shouldn't go do what you want first and then ask for the right permits. You should go out, investigate, talk to your neighbors, talk to the community, see what you can do first, and then go about starting it. For that reason, I'm opposed to allowing this as a precedent to say, yes, go ahead with that, and then permit afterwards. I think you got to remove that first, and then talk about what the right thing to do is first, and go from there.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. I couldn't agree more with my colleagues and with the opposition on this matter. It's an inappropriate use in a residential community, and it does nothing for property values, and in fact, would probably diminish property values. I understand they're deep lots, but nonetheless, it's, it's an inappropriate commercial use in a residential community, and for that reason, I, I am against it.
Can we direct it?
Do we, a motion to oppose?
I move to deny.
Second.
Please vote.
Okay, just for clarification, to the extent that it is denied, we would have to have, in a subsequent meeting, we'll just have to have a notice of denial or a resolution of denial that would have to be approved by the council.
Okay.
As a formality.
And just for, for clarification, if we vote yes, that is to support the motion in denience of the CUP.
Yes.
The motion was for denial, then at the next meeting, an actual written resolution, because what's in front of you is a resolution of approval, will come back for your affirmation.
Just want to make sure we're all on the same page. Thank you.
But that would not have to be a public hearing? It, it will be a continuation of this public hearing, yes.
Okay. Please vote.
Okay. The motion to deny was approved by a 5-0 vote. So at your next meeting, there will be a resolution outlining the statements here to support the findings of denial.
Thank you. Item six, public hearing. Our last hearing is the consideration of ordinance number 2019-613, adopting revised Orange County Taxi Administration Program Regulations. Steve, staff report.
You recall that the, in 1997, the county created a taxi administration program, OC Tax Administration Program, basically to coordinate the administration and the regulation of taxis throughout the cities and throughout the county. They have, over the years, revised that. OCTA has served that capacity for a number of years and has agreed to do so. The, the city pays into the contributions, part of the administration. But basically, they are now updating those regulations and requirements. OCTA is moving into a more of administrative role based on the taxi industry having to address things like Uber and those types of activities. So the standards have been changed to address what a taxi is and is not, et cetera. So this is an ordinance that would adopt the revised regulate, regulations that are being coordinated with all the other cities that are now currently in OC. So we would recommend approval, it's the first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions of staff on this before we hear public hearings or public comments, excuse me? Okay. Any public comments on this matter? Any discussion of this matter? Do I have a motion on this matter?
Motion.
Second. Please vote.
Passed it by a 5-0 vote. Again, this will come back, second reading will come back in the April 23 meeting.
Next up, we have the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are usually enacted by one motion approving the recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or public may request an item be removed from the consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Councilmembers, are there any items you would like to remove from the consent calendar?
Yep.
Item 12 and 14.
12 and 14.
The public has also asked to pull number 12.
Okay. Five. Okay. Thank you.
But can I, can I ask a favor? Can we put one before the other? 14 before 12 because-
Sure. Yes.
We have residents here that-
Without, yes. Without, without, without a doubt. Let's get that done. Let's hear item 14 unless the public has any other items that they'd like to pull.
Are we not supposed to hear the remainder of the-
Uh, let's go ahead and vote on, excuse me, let's go ahead and vote on the remainder and then handle item 14, then item 12. Am I on the same page?
Right.
Okay. Sounds good.
Motion.
All right. Motion to approve the balance.
Second.
Okay. Please vote.
Passed it by a five zero vote.
Item 14, please. Item 14 is a Villa Park Community Services Foundation appointment. The city council and as a member of the foundation is looking to appoint Lori Kretzinger and Carl, misspelled, in the agenda and we sincerely apologize for that. For two-year terms expiring January 31st, 2021. That has been noted and staff has been admonished by yours truly and others. Steve, do you have any comments on this?
No, we, this would bring the membership up to 10 members, I believe.
Okay. Any members of the public that want to comment on this or any discussion by council?
I'd just like to offer some comments.
By all means.
I'm, I'm really excited that you two have stepped forward to invest your time into the, in the foundation to help us. You guys have been a, a great part of this city for a long, long time. I've known you both for a long time and really do appreciate the commitment that you're about to undertake and do for this city and for the foundation and want to thank you.
I can just echo those comments. I really appreciate your efforts and your consideration. Thank you.
Ditto, yeah.
Ditto. All right. If, unless there's any further comment about this, I so move.
Second.
Please vote.
Passed it by a five zero vote.
Next up, item 12. And Steve, can you-
Item 12 was initiated at the request of the council to basically come back with a code of ethics. This was generated about two months ago, I believe, in the course of discussions. We are in the process of, what we basically did is come back and we surveyed what other counties and other cities were doing, other entities were doing. So we basically took a generic snapshot of something another city was doing. And in fact, if you look carefully as one county might find, you'll still find the wording on one of the other city.
Yes.
In reference in there. But it basically, it's a first draft and it's intended to be just a, sort of just that, a first draft to try and get a code of ethics. And I believe from our perspective, the adoption of a code of ethics that would pertain to the city council-appointed officials, members of the committees and advisory boards, and all city employees would be a well-advised move by the council in whatever final form it may take. But I think it's a clear statement of what the city does and does not support.
You know, having read this, I'd, I'd just like to start comments on this, if I may, and then certainly want to hear from the public. I want to commend staff for the work on this. I, you know, we had a chuckle earlier about Belmont. You know, these things happen when you're writing a long document, but I think it's a step in the right direction. I think things, there's some things in the past that would have been avoided had we had this in place. And this is something that I've lobbied for and I believe Mayor Protim Pitts and probably the, frankly, the, the balance of the council feels very strongly about this. And I thank you for stepping forward and doing this. Any public-
I have a question of staff. Would this apply to not just city staff and council people, but also to any of our committee members?
Yeah, all of our committees and advisory committee members as well.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you for that clarification.
Question. Any members of the public want to comment? Mr. Mills, welcome, sir.
Welcome. Mayor, council? Yeah, it's Greg Mills, live on Villa Woods Drive here. And I was, I'm curious about this because you just said just now that you basically, you know, took it from other cities, which, which is fine. But I think it needs to have a little more analysis of how it's going to affect all the committee members and how it affects them and, and actually their membership in various committees. They may not be willing to subject themselves to. It's, it's just a fine point, but I think since we rely here on so many volunteers and we, we've had a very good run of that for the last, I think, 10, 12 years, the people stepping up, that we look at the consequences of all of this and see what it is before we start. I realize this is a first reading. And I was also, I consider this on a consent calendar and not on a new business calendar. So that's because it's already was, was discussed, what, two months ago, to bring it forward. But now we need to take, look at a little more closely because we've gotten into trouble in the past by jumping the gun a little bit. But I do agree that we need to have that so that people know clearly what they're getting into. Because, you know, being on other, other committees and other agencies in the county, you, you subject yourself to a lot more liabilities and especially the, the harassment ones as, as an example.
I, I would only offer, and I agree, I, I think you're right, that we need to carefully review this. But I think this is a statement of the council and what the council is willing to accept. So I think that if a member is not, and I've heard this from other city managers, if you don't have people that want to serve and are volunteering to serve with the code of ethics that the council approves, you may want to question whether they belong in those committees. And that's something that you, you've got to keep in mind. This is a city statement reflective of the council's priorities. So I think that's something that we ought to do. We ought to be careful, careful that it goes both ways.
Oh, I agree. But, but, but my point is that sometimes we need expertise for certain things and that would subject these folks to it as well. And maybe it'll be, be a lot of conflict there. Because some, some of the times we have ad hocks and things like that, are they going to be subjected to this as well? To every committee we form? That's my, my, my real question. It's anytime we form a committee, is it going to affect those other folks in the same way? And they have to have the training, et cetera. Because what if it's just a, it's a simple committee like the foundation?
The, the city council can basically construct this however they want to. They can say that ad hoc committees created for single purpose, limited duration are not, you know, say, say you wanted to put them together to discuss the general plan or you want them to discuss certain issues. You wouldn't have to, you could exclude them from this. Again, whether the council wants to do that or not do that, that's the construct of the council. It's entirely the council's document and statement of what the city is or is not, believe is, an ethical position. Now we do, and I, I will be very candid, Form 700s have become the same sort of issue where people are not willing to submit to certain-
Exactly.
... restrictions on certain committees and serve because if they're going to have to serve, they don't want to disclose. So from business interests, it might affect them. So you are very correct. It does have those exact same implications for, for members. But again, that's sort of the council's decision, what they want to say or are not correct here.
Well, if it's a first reading though, I think we, this should be more out in the community and not on a consent calendar. I, I just thought it was an inappropriate place for it myself, although we have the right to pull it, of course. So, and that's, that's why I asked the questions to, to, to the council. I just want, I, we want people to volunteer in the city because we don't have a large budget, as we all, well, well know. So we, we want to make sure that we make the most of it of all the folks here in town. And, and it's, and also other people that will volunteer from the outside. So that's all I was just trying to get a clarification there. But is it, is it a first pass or is this going to, to adopt it?
It's entirely up to the council what they want to do with it. Again, there's no pride of ownership here. It's no, this is, this is a response to the request. And I got questions when I talked to several other city managers saying, you don't already have one. Sort of in shock that we didn't have something in place. I had one city attorney actually call me and say, do you guys really not have a code of ethics for your city? And I said, no, we don't. Not that is uniformly adopted by the council. So that's not to say that it can't be and it needs to be done, but I think we need to move forward in that. And I believe that Mr. Mills creates some really valid points. We'll be happy to sit down with whoever wants to sit down with us and tell us how to change it or whatever the council wants to do. I, I offer it only as a response to the council.
No, I think it's, I think it's, it's the right, right direction, absolutely. I, I don't disagree with that. It's just that it, it just seemed like it's, it needed to be, make sure we understood the consequences. Because we are smaller, we are not Tuning and Beach, you know, we don't have those kinds of issues typically. But as we know, that boil could come up at any time. So anyway, that, that's, that was all I wanted to make a comment about that. So thank you.
Quick question for you, Mr. Mills. Was there, this seemed pretty general. Was there anything specific or was there anything about it in particular that you thought maybe people would object to?
No, it's, it's just that I, I, I think that just like our CUP process, there's always, we need to think about a little bit how, how we, we're getting all these folks to come in. It's not like we're hiring employees to be on the, on these different little agencies within our city. We're trying to get people here that have things that they may not want to talk about openly, like with the Form 700s. Of course, we all have agreed, I still do, of course, just like you all do. But it, it's, it's one of those things I think we really need, need to be careful about and how, how we adopt these code of ethics. That's all. And make it simple, not, not complicated. Very, very simple. Because I mean, I think we've all, we're all pretty, we're very honest people here. I mean, obviously it's great that people come up and talk about how they feel about their neighbor. That's one of the toughest things to do-
Yeah.
-as an example. So I'm, I'm all for it, but I think we need to look at some possible consequences here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for me or for you?
Comments?
By all means.
Just a, a point of history. I reviewed this with Councilman Nelson back some time ago and offered up some significant, significant edits to this. And I don't, I asked the council here to go back and reread this because there's censorship involved in this ethics document of council members. If someone doesn't like what you're doing, they go to the, to the, to the mayor and the Mayor Protim, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So if I say something that somebody doesn't like, they can try and censor me by, by through this, through this document. So I would encourage all of you to consider rereading and redoing this, this agreement. Because I'll tell you, as it stands right now, I can't support it written the way it is. Yes, I agree that people should be taking ethics training, just like we do. People should be taking sexual harassment training, just like we do, and subject to the same rules and regulations as that if you're on a committee. But some of the language in this is, is, is not, in my opinion, not appropriate. You know, I'm, I'm here, I, I serve at the pleasure of the, of the people of this city. I don't serve at the pleasure of this council. And if you don't like what I say, I'm sorry, just like right now. But I will tell you, I'm not going to be censored. And that's what this document has, has inside of it, is information like that. But I, I, just from a history lesson, I, I offer significant comments and changes, but it was never brought forward.
Were the-
And I don't support this at all.
Were those provided to, I, I know that the theory is what you have supported in the past. Perhaps not the actual document here. You and I have not had the opportunity to discuss this, but the actual document here. But are there aspects of this document that you do support or is it just there's, I understand what paragraphs you're referring to. And have you had an opportunity to discuss those with our city manager as you have other matters?
Yeah, I've, like I said, I've significantly, and I still have, I still have the, the redline that I'll make available to anybody. But I'm telling you, the, the way it's written today, and, and the thing is, no offense to our city manager, let's put on a consent calendar. If I hadn't pulled it, we would have voted for it, it had been done.
Actually, I was going to pull it, but I understand your point.
But, but it's, it's, you know, in, in all fairness to what a, a previous mayor had, had brought up about consideration of other, of our committees and things like that, I do believe that there needs to be some guidelines and some thoughts so that we don't, we don't have issues going forward. You look in our federal system today and, and so forth, you hear a lot about sexual harassment and all this other stuff. But, and I don't discount the fact that we need to train and, and recognize that there are rules around this. But at the same time, this has got language that I can't support.
I understand that. I think we're, we're beyond just sexual harassment and training. You know, this goes into meeting decorum and how meetings are run. And you can disagree with somebody, but there are civil ways of doing it. In the past, we haven't seen that which have, which have delayed meetings. We've seen conduct by members of the public that was arguably abusive to other council members. And they're, they're certainly given a, a wide berth by the fact that it's a public comment. But we want to make sure that our committee members, our council members, our staff, anyone that bears responsibility in the city acts in accordance with a code of ethics. I understand your arguments with-
Don't disagree, but-
I understand your, your arguments with respect to censorship. And that was one of the questions I was going to raise, besides the fact that we're not Belmont, but-
Right.
And I think we should all take a, take a good go at this now that it's been out there. Because I, you know, as far as a, a consent calendar item, I, I don't think it's 100% appropriate. I think we should all have a little bit more influence in this. I, I'd frankly would love to hear from our, our new city council members. It sounds like Chad, you're in supportive of the theory of it, but if you have specific comments about it, I'd, I'd welcome those. And I think, Crystal, I think it's important. We all come from different backgrounds and I think Mayor Protim Pitts's comments with respect to censorship are important and need to be heard. The people voted for us for a reason and that's to hear our voices, whether I may like it or you may like it or vice versa. Anyone else?
I think it'd be a good idea to, to bring this back next month.
Okay.
And maybe if we can focus on, come to an agreement on those sections that we support.
Okay.
And then, you know, continue to work through any remaining sections and, you know, subsequent meetings to, you know, to flesh out a code of ethics. But at least get something down where we can say that we've got a code of ethics and then develop it from there.
I think it's a good suggestion. Anyone else in the audience want to comment on this matter? I'd like to move that we continue this matter, not even have the first reading on this and that it become a-
So it's a resolution, so it's not-
You don't have to have a second.
You don't have to have a second.
Right. Okay.
So as a resolution, it doesn't have force and effect of law. Resolution is more policy-centric as a guidepost, more than a complete statutory prohibition.
So I think it would be important that all of us provide our written comments back to our city manager. And we can have a, a discussion at the next meeting. Does that sound fair?
Yep.
Everybody in agreement on that?
If, if I may.
By all means.
I just wanted to say thanks to the city staff for preparing this. I think I was shocked also that we already didn't have something.
Mm-hmm.
And that I really appreciate the additional comments from Mr. Mills. If it might help to make it easier for our community to join in with the committees and such, if we had maybe an encompassing code of ethics for city council and then maybe some, somewhat of a less indoctrinating form for our committees or something, if we, that there were a way to perhaps split it into a heavy version and a light version, as you will, that might make things a little bit easier. That would be my only suggestion.
Can I add something? Code of ethics, I think, is really important and I tend to go to the extreme of that. I think it's a better insurance policy to have a stronger, more secure policy relating to ethics. And funny, before I, before the election, whatnot, when I was on the foundation, I was discussing with the other directors about our committees, like the boat parade and the Halloween Fest, and about putting them through some sort of harassment training, Brown Act training for those, for those ad hoc committees. So I'm glad to see that we're going to actually get some sort of resolution out of it to do that. Because I know that, you know, when we have all those volunteers out there for Halloween Fest and none of them have been vetted or trained, that scares me. So to me, more is better, not less. That's just my two cents.
Motion?
I think that the direction was to continue and I-
It is.
-thought I got consensus. So that's, it's not a public hearing item, so it don't need to be official.
Okay. Moving on to new business. First item in new business is regarding the homeless outreach, North Orange County Service Planning Area Memorandum of Understanding. Steve, could you please bring us up to speed on this?
Item number 16 is the, as you mentioned, the MOU, Memorandum of Understanding, between the 13 north county cities, basically that approached the construction operation of navigation centers or shelters for, that would serve homeless adults, children and families located in the north service planning areas, which we are a member of. This has to do with the construction and operation of homeless shelters that would, with this participation, this would allow us to, it's designed to allow us to continue and move forward in- and move forward in addressing and enforcing our various municipal codes regarding loitering and camping in public places. The, specifically, the, one of the key points here is that this is, there are a number of shelters, but this outlines the funding formulas and the respective shares of the 13 cities. And there are two cities in specifically that will be funded with this. The two sho, the two shelters being discussed are in Buena Park and Placentia. And the total operation would be close to 14 million to construct these, but that's funded in large part by outside funding, so only a million two will be funded by the respective cities. And our share would be five, I'm sorry, $5,221. Secondarily, the ongoing operation is, is several million dollars. Again, most of it being funded by outside sources, including the county. The, the city's share would be a little over $1,000 a year, $1,112 to be exact. So this is an MOU that would, is being presented to all 13 north county SPA members, and it is, I believe, the city of Placentia is doing it on April 2nd, and then the, the last one would be Buena Park on April 9th. The reason they would be doing it last is because they want to make sure they have funding partners throughout the process. So it is our, we strongly support, this is an item that is directly related to federal court cases related to homeless and enforcement of homeless laws and municipal codes. I believe we've had tremendous cooperation and leadership from the north county, respective north county city councils and city managers. We've spent hours debating and discussing how we could fund this type of thing, corresponding this, and it is, there is a, a proposed settlement agreement that would potentially be addressed, that would address some of the lawsuits that are pending as well. So this is the first step, I believe, in working through and allowing us to continue to enforce the homeless, I'm sorry, the, our municipal codes that we have in Villa Park. What's important here, too, I think, is that the, the agreement in and of itself is, is a 10-year agreement, and it would, there would be some penalty if we left early, so it's designed to be a longer lasting type of agreement. So that's what we're hoping it will, will be, and there is, there's a number of other issues still pending here, so this is again, first step, so we're a long way from resolving the homeless problem, but I think we're, we're moving in the right direction. And I do think that as, as a service area, it, it's been very, very inspiring to watch the rest of the north county city step forward and say, okay, we can do this. And including Villa Park, who has, the council has spoken forward and said, yes, we'd like to participate. So we are at a very minimal cost being allowed to participate, and I think that's a, a wise move, so I would recommend approval of the MOU, and I can certainly, and, and there may be, I, I do want to clarify, there may be some minor tweaks of the MOU, just because dollar nouns are becoming clarified by the respective parties in Buena Park and Placentia as they get construction eximents finalized. And with that, I would ask the, the council to consider approval.
Thank you. Council members, do you have any questions of staff on this?
Just one thing, we're not going to stop Camp Bobcat.
No. No.
Light.
I'd like to compliment our city manager for his efforts to get us this far in resolving this very difficult, thorny issue. And I think the resolution that we're, we're heading is something that will be probably the best solution we could, could have hoped for.
I, I think both Steve and Todd have really provided a tremendous amount of leadership and, and well reasoned advice, and I thank them for that. It's a difficult subject, and they've really done us quite, quite well. Thank you for that.
Just for the benefit of two, I would offer that this has been developed in, in, under the direct purview of federal court judge David Carter, and he has seen the MOU. It has been provided to him, and he has provided his wise sage counsel on this. So I want to say this is not something developed just on, on the part of a number of individuals. We will be attending, Todd and I, and I believe the mayor is attending-
Correct.
...April 2nd, another court appearance. So this is again, not going away, but I think it'll be a, a very much a nice thing to have done by the time we get to April 2nd court.
Thank you. Is there anyone from the public that'd like to comment on this item? Do we have any further discussion? What, Chad?
If I may, so I wanted to point out that we're not named in the original court filing for this, but our city manager's gone out and made sure that we're ahead of the game on this one. And I think that proactiveness in our city is really important, and it's something that, it shows good character and the two, the city councillor and the way that we've done this has been exemplary, and I, I want to make sure that we all understand this is just a first step. There's more coming, but that it's a great first step, and I'm, I'm really proud that our city's participating in this, so thank you for, for taking the effort to do that.
Indeed, thank you for your comments. Do I have a motion on this?
A move we approve.
A second.
We have a motion and a second.
Pick a second, I guess.
Please vote.
Passed by a 5-0 vote.
Next item is item 17. It's the street maintenance contract award. Steve?
Okay, as part of the, you recall, as part of the street maintenance contract, there were a number of streets we addressed and changed. One of the things that we're doing is some pothole repairs and things like that, that we're, we're there. And then, in dealing with the contract, we have an RJ Noble, the quote on some of their repairs was high in the eyes of our city engineer, and he said he thought we could do better. So he said, let's go out and let's talk to some others, and he basically has come back and we, after doing some bids with El Camino asphalt paving for approximately 50% cheaper than if we'd had to include it under the original contract with RJ Noble. So it is part of the street project, but it is an element that we've itemized out of there to save money, so we, we can get more done with our bang for our buck, if you will. So we're not, we're not adding any more streets or anything like that right now. We're fixing the potholes that we had planned to fix, but we're doing it in a cheaper, less, more efficient way, given the cost estimates we've had on the project. And we have a public member, Greg Mills, that wanted to speak on the item.
Yeah, I had a couple, excuse me. Greg Mills, Villa Park, Villa Woods Drive. I want to ask you if, on these potholes, are we actually looking underneath and see what the root cause is as well?
Yeah, these, these would go six inches deep and we would go through on that, yes.
Okay. The next thing I want to know, what's the schedule for redoing the, we always do a number of streets every year. What's, I haven't seen the schedule out for that yet.
We had the schedule issued, and then we had January and February rains, so we have lost about-
Everything good.
-four to six weeks of, of the scheduled project that we're in it currently. So we will be posting on our website within the next week, we'll be posting a full schedule for all the streets that were remaining under this project.
Assuming it's dry enough, right?
Assuming we can control that, yes.
With their permitting.
Right, thanks.
Thank you, Greg. Any other members of the audience that want to comment on this?
Okay, we've got 30,000 in the budget and the contract is for 24.5. We have a lot of problems or repair needs throughout the city. Would it be possible to expend the full $30,000, you know, once they complete the initial set of potholes to, so that we can more comprehensively address some of our problems?
Typically, I don't have council ask me to spend more, but we can spend more if you want us to. We can try and do more with it, but I, I think that candidly, we're trying, what we identified, the work we identified, we can get it done for 24,000. So we can potentially identify additional work, and if that's what you're asking, certainly we can make that effort. I think that's what you're asking.
That would be my motion, then.
To, to approve it for $30,000 as opposed to 24.5.
Yes.
Question on the process for that? Are, we're, we're scheduling work based on the work, not on the cost, or is the cost determining how much work we can do?
It, it's a combination. What's available funds typically dictates, and we, we have a lot of street repair and maintenance that has to be done, so we have to prioritize that. So things get prioritized, and you've heard people come in and say, what about my street? When's my street potholes get, there's big potholes? The rains have affected us as well, because you, you typically, and Councilman has pointed out, each, each one of you has pointed out one time, the rains typically create problems. They get under the pavement and all of a sudden we have potholes we didn't know we had when we set the schedule up. So we have additional work that we can get to, but we had always operated within constraints of the dollar amount. So at this point, we'd only identified 24,000 based on the work we identified. We certainly can go back and say, well, now that we have the money, let's go fix the other things that have popped up that we know that we have to fix.
I guess just to clarify, wouldn't you automatically do that?
Well, depending on the grade and severity of what needs to be done, we would move forward. And we have, typically have two-year projects, so we accumulate our projects over two years, and it will come forward with you and say, here's our list of next projects. But if we can move something forward now, it would be something we would move forward now on. There are, there are degrees of, of severity, if you will. All right? So the most severe things, yes, we're moving forward on it, but some things, we're going to do temporary fixes, which we wouldn't need to do if we would add this in.
And we have, we have, we have money set aside to pave certain streets. This is just maintenance of potholes and-
Yes.
-things like, like that, that crop up-
Yes, yes, sir.
-and so forth, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So mayor, as to, I think, the more procedural question, the contract would be for $24,000. Usually, you would come back if you exceed budget appropriations, but that is within that limit, so you wouldn't necessarily have to come back for that. Under contract law, there's something known in public works contracts, the green book, which is always incorporated into public works contracts, which allows a 20% additive deductive flux. So if there was more work theoretically under this contract incorporating that type of green book terminology, it technically could go up $4,000 anyway, and it wouldn't have to come back because it's still within the budget appropriation. So that's sort of how that-
That's kind of my thought. I, I don't think we need a second motion. I think it's kind of an understanding on this, and if, if, and I appreciate Councilman Colacott's concern, because there, there's quite a bit of delayed maintenance around the city, but I don't think we even really need that, do we?
So I'd recommend, I mean, to effectuate that intent, I think we generally have that leeway anyway, and I'd sort of want to stick to the bid since it was informally bid at this point in time-
No.
-because that gives more credibility to the bid process. But if there are things that come up in the process that can be fixed within those parameters, you know, staff will assuredly deal with it appropriately.
Okay.
One question.
Okay, please.
It may not be appropriate to ask at this point, but did we have a chance to look into that pavement to help with the heat zones in Villa Park?
Yes, we do, and, and Akram and I are sitting down, we're going to visit and talk to some other people who have utilized that type of pavement.
Okay.
Apparently, there's some engineering things I don't understand, but he said, come and see, let's talk and let's, so I think we're exploring what that feasibility is of those things, but I think that-
It seems like a great idea to start looking at things like that because of the amount of heat that our paved roads generate, you know, from, with, with the sun beating down on them, and if there's an alternative that can help lower, you know, that heat radiation for the folks in Villa Park as well as surrounding communities, it'd be good, good thing.
Right, it's a good idea, so Akram and I were pursuing-
I'll refer to you to talk to them and find out the technicality of it.
Right, and there's engineering element that I, it's above my pay grade, I think.
Understood.
All right, with respect to this motion as it stands now, any further comment from the public or the council? Seeing none, do I have a motion on this matter?
So moved that we award the contract?
Yes, you pick.
Go ahead, sorry.
I hear two, two different voices here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Twee's recording it, so I'll let her-
Okay.
Her decision of the day.
Twee, pick one.
I'll second you for whatever.
All right, Councilmember Zimmerman, it's his, his motion, and Mayor Pro Tem Pitts' second, for the record. Please vote.
Passed by a 5-0 vote.
Okay. Next up, the city manager report.
This is the, the monthly city manager report, and in deference to time, I'll just let you know that our priority is, again, moving as many things into the completed column as we can, so you see that we prepared to answer any questions you may have on any of them.
Anybody have any questions about that on council and the public? Nope, seeing none. Thank you for your report, Steve. Next up, mayor and council member matters, item 19. Now we will discuss the council member requested item from Mayor Pro Tem Pitts and Councilman Miles about considering sending a letter to the Villa Park representative, to the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees regarding performance of duties. Steve, can you please give us a history behind this matter for those who are unfamiliar? And also, may I please hear from our city attorney on this matter, and do we have input from the Vector Control District at this time?
Okay, this item is brought forward by Mayor Pro Tem Pitts and Councilman Miles, so I certainly will defer to them on the comments on, on, on that. We have an appointment to, as a governing body, as a member of the, the mosquito and vector control, we have a appointment that is basically a two or a four-year term, and last, in, in, just in 2017, Councilman at that time, Nelson was appointed to a two-year term. His term would expire in 2020. He's got one year left on that term. It went from 2018 to 2020. He is, you do not need to be a member of the city council to be a representative, it's just a representative selected by the council candidly. So we were asked to put something on, you'll remember this item came back up in, in January, which the mosquito and vector control said, no, you have it, we have a two-year appointment, and Mr. Nelson needs to remain on the council from their perspective. So there, I guess that's, answers the question, is their input from the mosquito and vector control district. I'll let Todd address the legal matters from that point forward, and obviously, Mayor Pro Tem Pitts and Councilman Miles should have opportunity.
Right, so the vector control board is a creature of state law, outlined in the Health and Safety Code. The Health and Safety Code talks about members being appointed by city agencies, and it has a lot of discussion about what a vector control board can do. It says absolutely nothing about how a person is removed from a vector control board position. It does have a reference to a government code provision, and if you track that down a few, a few beats, it gets to government code section 1770, which talks about when individuals, either elected officials or appointed members, are removed from boards. A, a number of the boards are not, a number of those conditions are not applicable to this current situation. One subsection just says a person is removed when they're removed and a vacancy is created. Another provision says, in essence, when they no longer fulfill the duties of the office for a three-month period. The, there is no case law on this issue. There is an attorney general opinion, so the attorney general issues opinions on legal matters when requested by state officers. And so somebody asked the attorney general, well, we want to remove a person from the vector control board, just because we want to, can we do that? And the attorney general said, no, you can't do that. Once they're appointed, there is no provision just to remove them at the pleasure of the city council that appointed them, therefore, it's our, it's our opinion that that cannot be done. Attorney general opinions are not binding as a matter of law, but they're pretty strong precedent for the legal issues they address. So the closest provision from a legal matter is whether someone has failed to fulfill the responsibilities of the office for a three-month time period. There is an attorney general opinion that talks about that matter for a little bit, and it says, unless the person has, has signaled an intent to be removed and to no longer fulfill such duties, you cannot remove someone just because you don't think they've fulfilled the duties. That's the, the lay of the land as far as the law. We did reach out to the vector control board, correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, and they did not have a list of what the duties are for board members. And then we internally, as a city, don't either have such lists. I mean, in the past, though, it has been practiced for vector control board members to report on when they go to meetings and give the council reports of their duties. That's how it's been dealt with in the past. As a historical point, we did have this situation once before, I think I brought this up last time. Councilman Jim Ryan, rest his soul, he had lost election, reelection to the city council. He had been the vector control board member. When he lost election, city council asked him to step down. He said, no, thank you, I'm going to stay on the vector control board, and he stayed for two years until his term was up, and then the council appointed someone else. So that's the lay of the land. Answer any questions? Yes?
To the situation you just described, did, did that councilman still continue to give reports that you know of?
Were you here, Greg? That was even before you, I think. I think sporadically, sporadic.
Thank you.
Did he attend meetings?
He attended vector control board meetings.
Correct.
I think maybe once or twice he came and reported to the council. I don't think- I don't think he gave consistent written reports, but he would give updates sporadically.
Okay, thank you. Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem Pitts?
It's time. I put this on the agenda for several reasons. One in particular, the, you know, Councilman past Nelson was appointed. I realize it's a two-year term, and I respect all of that. The challenge I have is he is being paid taxpayer money to serve on this board. And he has, in my opinion, has a duty to fulfill his role, including giving feedback to this council on what impacts are going on for the city of Villa Park. To not show up for three months and not know what's going on within the vector control, to me is inexcusable, especially when you're paid to do this. We, I sat in my office, my home office this morning, and I looked at the screen on the back door, and it probably had 100 mosquitoes on it. And I do a lot in my yard to protect us from having mosquito problems with standing water and things of that nature. But to not have any Villa Park representation there, because he's not, certainly not speaking on behalf of Villa Park if he is. He's speaking on his own behalf, because he's not coming back in here and asking the city council for our guidance or direction, or giving us any input for the community on what's going on with Vector right now, especially in this situation as mosquitoes are becoming prolific in our community. I mean, last year, we had West Nile virus detected in the city. So I mean, this is, to me, to just, you know, not come and give a report, a simple report, or send the report in, to me is you're not fulfilling your duty, as this. And I too did some research on this and found you can, from what I read, you can terminate for cause. Now, that's my layman's review of things, and that's part of the reason I brought this up. My motion tonight was to send him a letter of notice and say, give us the reports. If you're representing us and you're getting paid to do this, which he is, and it's taxpayer money, he owes the taxpayers due diligence and a report for us on the behalf of the city. That's just, that's the reason I put this on here. So I'm not asking him to be taken off the committee. We're asking him, to be perfectly honest with you, she helped me with that a little bit because I asked in the beginning to have him, you know, taken off the committee for just cause. But I think we do owe him the opportunity to come and represent himself and what he's doing on this committee and provide a report to us on a monthly basis, even if he stands at that podium or he sends us, Steve, an email with an update on what's going on. And I think this motion is for a letter to be sent to him, serving that purpose.
May I comment?
By all means.
May I comment? So my understanding is that when we did the committee assignments, unbeknownst to us, we appointed someone else to the committee. You came back, notified us that he is still active and very much a part of the vector control. We all conceded, accepted that 100% with the caveat that, you know, would he still provide the reports? That was the month of January. There was no report for January. Then in February, I believe, when we had asked you to request from Councilman Nelson to come and report, he replied that he wasn't going to. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I have a problem with that. So if he is refusing to do his paid representative job paid by the taxpayers, then he needs to either step down or, if he continues to not provide the reporting that is, that he has done in the past, then what I suggested is that instead of just forcibly removing him, he's an, you know, he was an active member of this council for several years. This is his second term on vector control. I appreciate all of his time spent. However, to outright refuse to come and report is an egregious act to me, especially when he's getting the taxpayer money. He doesn't have to show up. He could send it by email. He could send a representative. But it's, I think we can all agree, not the proper use of taxpayer funds to go to the meetings, collect $200, and not share what he's learned. We are landlocked with Orange and Anaheim Hills. The rains, I'm sure, just from a past background and bio, I know we're going to have increased mosquito populations. I know we're going to have increase of different problems associated, you know, with the rains. And we don't know anything about it, so he's not here to provide any kind of reporting. On that code that you had mentioned about the cease to perform the duties, and then I guess we don't really know, because there's no defined duty, what a duty is, I'd have to kind of rely on the history of, for his first term, he reported every time. So he went to the meetings, he collected the $200, and he sat up here and reported. For the first half of his second term, again, the duty dictates, based on history, that he knows he's supposed to give the report. So even though it might not say what the duty is, his past history and performance dictates that the duty is to provide a report. And I have a question. On the very next item, it talks about a Government Code Section 53232.3D. And it says it requires that members of legislative bodies report on meetings attended for which there has been expense reimbursement or other compensation. So why doesn't this government code apply?
That applies to council member. He's no longer on the council.
Only to government, right? That only applies to government?
Right, so-
So because now he's a private citizen, okay.
He's a private citizen, right.
So, so I, instead of just removing him, I thought it would be best, we asked for a verbal, we gave him a verbal request. He denied it. I think the next proper step is to do a written request, letting him know that if he continues to refuse to provide the service as he has for the past three years, then the council will have to take other action.
I just want an additional comment. I remember when Mr. Nelson was on this council, he was a proponent for trip reports. He was very adamant that we, you know, and got things passed in here with regards to an expense policy that included trip reports. Yet he's not, he's being paid, he's being compensated, but he's not given a trip report or any type of report. So, you know, it's a contradiction. It's hypocrisy when you sit there and say, I want you guys on the council to do a trip report anytime you're spending government money. But I'm being paid government money, but I don't want to do a report. So that's hypocrisy to me. And I'm sorry, you know, if it sounds like it's, you know, the wrong thing. But he's being paid money to do this. He owes us that.
Anything further?
No, sir.
As a question, the city council appoints this person.
Yes.
If we appointed somebody else and overrode our previous appointment, would that be something that we could do without contradicting or without having to actually remove him? If we just said, we're appointing this new person, would that supersede a previous appointment?
Given my past experience with them, the vector control board would not consider it a legitimate appointment.
Anything further?
I guess I think the important part is that we get a report, too. I agree, given the circumstances. So I'm trying to think of another way in which we could still, in terms of getting somebody at the vector control meeting that would give a report. It seems like we might be stuck in a situation, and I agree that sending some sort of notices is the next logical step. But perhaps there's another way to go about achieving maybe a better result even and getting something. I don't know if they put out meeting minutes or something that we could just have them send them directly to us.
So are, Chad, not to sound, are you okay with, if Vector was to say, yeah, we have minutes, we can forward you the minutes, and we just read the minutes, does that make the fact that he's receiving taxpayer money acceptable?
It doesn't.
Okay.
I'm just trying to at least, if we can't get past one set of a hurdle, is there another way around it, is all I'm looking for?
Thank you.
Okay, first of all, I'd like to clarify a couple of misstatements or misunderstandings by Councilwoman Mills-
Miles.
Or Miles and Councilman Pitts. First of all, I've got a copy right here of the California Health and Safety Code, Chapter 1, Mosquito Abatement and Vector Control Districts. Section 2030, Paragraph A, says, "The members of the Board of Trustees shall serve without compensation." So those not being paid to go to the meetings.
Is that true?
It's 2030, Paragraph E.
He is getting paid.
I'm pretty sure-
He's getting paid.
He's getting paid.
It says $100 a meeting.
Yeah, he gets reimbursed for travel expense, not paid. He's reimbursed, so he serves with, it clearly says-
Attend the meeting.
Compensation. So that's one item. The other is that there's been the statement that our representative on the vector control district represents the city of Villa Park. In fact, it says in the California Health and Safety Code, Section 2021, Paragraph E, "All trustees shall exercise their independent judgment on behalf of the interests of the residents, property owners, and the public as a whole in furthering the purposes and intent of this chapter. Their trustees shall represent the interests of the public as a whole and not solely the interest of the Board of Supervisors or the city council that appointed them." So there, whoever, you know, even the representative from Garden Grove is representing the interests of the county as a whole, just like Bill is representing the interests of the county as a whole, not specifically the interests of the residents of Villa Park, which aren't going to differ from the county as a whole.
Do you know if those other representatives are giving reports?
I have no idea. But I'm wondering why the council's taking up this issue. It clearly and properly states in the item write-up that the California Attorney General appointed in 2011 that a city council may not remove a trustee at council's pleasure. This is clearly what you're trying to do with this claim of trustees' duties, which I don't think exist, that they include providing monthly reports to the city council. According to the California Mosquito Abatement and Vector Control Districts Law that governs mosquito and vector control districts, which is this law that I was just reading from, districts are empowered to undertake and carry out a vast number of duties under Health and Safety Code Sections 2040 to 2093. And decisions regarding policy and oversight of the finances, operation, and administration of the districts are the primary responsibilities of the Board of Trustees. So again, I've got a copy of the law, and I'd be pleased to share a copy with you if you don't have one or are unable to pull one up on your internet. I challenge any of you to show me where it says in the Health and Safety Code Sections 2040 to 2093 that a trustee's duty includes monthly reporting to the city council. I've read the entire code. It doesn't exist. Mr. Nelson is a member of the city council, had a responsibility, as we all do as city councilmen, to report monthly on our attendance at outside meetings. I report monthly, we all do, as city councilmen. But as a private citizen and trustee, Mr. Nelson really does have no such responsibility. And this council cannot arbitrarily assign responsibilities to a trustee of another government agency. Bill is a trustee of the vector control district. He's not a member of our city council. Further, California Government Code 1770G states, "A vacancy occurs upon his or her ceasing to discharge the duties of his or her office for the period of three consecutive months. It's something that is enforced by the agency where the vacancy occurs, not by the council, by the vector control district, and cannot be imposed from the outside." I have a couple of questions to our legal counsel. First is, can the Villa Park City Council impose duties on an Orange County mosquito and vector control trustee?
There's nothing that prohibits the city from outlining duties as it sees fit for someone it appoints.
Where is the authority, where is the authority to impose additional duties on trustees of another special district?
Well, yeah, I mean, clearly, we can't tell somebody, you know, appointed person X what to do on the vector control board. My point is, though, that if, the city is a general law city. Clearly, one of the things we do is appoint someone to the vector control board. If the city wanted to outline XYZ parameters of its representative, it could do that as the entity that appoints people.
But you cannot impose duties on a trustee of an independent district?
In their capacity as a trustee of an independent district, that's correct, sure.
Right, just like we can't impose a duty on a representative on the Toronto Water District or a separate district.
I'd like to try.
Well, I think the answer is no. The second is, under California Government Code 1770G, when a vacancy occurs because someone ceases to discharge their duties for three consecutive months, who makes that determination, the affected agency or some outside agency?
Well, at the end of the day, anybody could, the way this works is because it deals with a public office, the way that issue is eventually resolved is through a quo-warranto action, which is brought by the Attorney General or somebody he designates, which is usually a district attorney, frankly, because the Attorney General doesn't want to get involved in it. So that's the entity that's going to decide whether somebody is fulfilling the duties of their office or not.
Not a city council.
Well, a judge.
But not the, not the Villa Park City Council doesn't make that determination. It's the-
No city council has the actual end determination of that issue, that is correct.
Okay, so let's be clear what's happening here. One of you wants to replace Mr. Nelson as trustee and is not willing to wait until he serves his duly-appointed term, and I've come up with this scheme to try to force him out.
That's not with this agenda item.
Let me finish.
Give him his due.
Also, according to the California Mosquito Abatement and Vector Control Districts Law that governs mosquito and vector control districts, states that Section 2047, that quote, "Any person who restrains, hinders, obstructs, or threatens any officer or employee of a district in the performance of that person's duties or any person who interferes with any work done by or under the direction of the district is guilty of a misdemeanor." So let's make sure we're not attempting to violate this law. Anyway, what I'd suggest is that we not continue this charade and just drop this issue. I don't think it's worth our time. You know, again, I'd like to correct an issue in the write-up that states that trustees receive payment from Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District for their service. Again, according to the Mosquito Abatement and Vector Control Districts Law that governs mosquito and vector control districts, under Section 2030A, "The members of the Board of Trustees shall serve without compensation. However, they are reimbursed for the expenses." And I'd like to go back to where I recall all this started, is, yeah, we, there was a thought that we had overlooked that when we were appointing city or representation on various boards and commissions, that the vector control district was one of the ones that, you know, perhaps we thought that the term was up or whatever. And then we found out that we was wrong, that Mr. Nelson had another year to go on his appointment. And, you know, Mr. Nelson has been involved with a number of, he's been involved in supporting our community, both at the county level and at the city level and special district level for, ever since he retired. And he's done many things. He's a pillar of our community. He, I believe, I've not discussed this with Bill, but I know if it were me, if I had been appointed for a two-year term to a special district, even one that doesn't compensate me, just as he served on the Community Services Foundation before he was elected to council, just as he served on the Investment Advisory Committee and so forth. He has, I would think, just knowing Bill's background and having looked up his bio that was previously on our city website, that, you know, he feels an ethical representative or ethical responsibility to continue his remainder of his term. That's up to him. That's his decision. But I think when we challenged him that, okay, we want you to resign, and then later, well, I expect him to come and give us an oral report every meeting, ordering him to do that. do that, I guess I'd take offense to that myself, and maybe that's his response, too. I suggest that we try to diffuse this and just go back and say, hey, Bill, you know, we'd like you to send us an email update, we'd just like to know what's going on with the Vector Control District for the remaining term, the remainder of your term. Next year, come back, revisit the whole issue, appoint another councilman to take over the position, just let it go. It's not worth the amount of time we spent tonight.
Counselwoman Miles.
Has former Councilman Nelson turned in a Form 700 for any of the reimbursement?
He submitted a leaving office Form 700, which he was required to do 30 days after, within 30 days of leaving office. He did do that. As far as a Form 700 with the receiving money from Vector Control, he would have to file with that agency, not with us.
So, there's no way to know if he has?
You could check with the FPPC, would be the only regulatory, that would be the way to check.
And if he, if there is a Form 700, then that would show that he is receiving money from Vector Control, is that?
I don't know what he's showing on his Form 700.
But if there was a Form 700 from Vector Control, that would be due to monies received?
If I may, probably not, because governmental income is not deemed, government accounting is not deemed income for Political Reform Act purposes.
Then a W-2?
So, it would not show up on the Form 700.
W-2, maybe?
Well, tax law, I don't know.
Irrespective of that, this agenda item is simply requesting that we send a letter. This agenda item is not asking for his removal or resignation. This agenda item is basically just sending a letter saying that if he continues to refuse to follow the path that he has done for the past three years, which is provide a report and update the City Council and the residents, that there could be another action. So, although I do appreciate all the data, and I would like to have a copy of that, Bob, if you don't mind, and I totally respect that you did your due diligence, not yet, because this 19 is just about sending a letter.
All right, now. You done?
I'm done.
Everybody else done? Okay. Now, are you done?
No.
Okay, you want, go ahead.
One more item.
Go ahead.
I take, I don't appreciate us accusing anyone of, because they weren't picked or were picked or whatever for a position, that there's motive behind this. This has to do with transparency, it has to do with due diligence, and it has to do with regards to this community and what we entrust in these people going to these meetings. I mean, like I said, we have no indication of what's going on in Vector Control right now for the last three months, and I don't know when we'll ever find out anything unless the city manager goes and asks them to provide us with a report, when it should be his responsibility. So, there's nothing vindictive here about this process, he's being compensated, regardless whether it's expenses or whatever, he's still being compensated, and there's transparency here with regards to all of that, and not something to do with, oh, I didn't get appointed, so I'm going to go after him type thing. So, I don't appreciate that kind, I thought we got rid of that last year, but evidently we haven't, because we're still coming back saying the same thing. So, I move that we.
I haven't had an opportunity.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
By all means, please.
Counsel.
Pam?
Just clarify a few things.
Could you pull up the mic?
The hundred dollars, I've got to come down here.
Who are you?
Okay, there you go.
Who are you?
You don't have to answer.
I know I don't. I know I don't. I'm back. No, just to clarify a few things, the hundred dollars that is received is a $10.99. That is how is that received. Whether that document says it's reimbursement or not, there are no expenses that are turned in, and you are $10.99, just as you are in the sanitation department, and you have a hundred dollar per meeting, and then they also pay, excuse me, $212, and then they also pay you for your mileage. Vector Control does not get mileage, they only get a hundred dollars.
It's a flat, right?
It's a flat fee. I believe the fire authority also only gives you a hundred dollars. So, you do make a lot of money, Bob, on the sanitation, actually to the tune of about $7,000 last year. Mr. Nelson makes $1,200 a year for going once time. The next thing I want to say is, I find it ironic that not more than 15 minutes ago, you guys spent about 35 minutes talking about an ethic document. I mean, and a document, quite frankly, that isn't worth the paper it's printed on because there were so many errors in it, but you're talking about an ethic document. And you have a council that has been elected, that appointed or allowed this appointment, I disagree, Todd, which I usually do sometimes with you, about whether he can be removed. He can be removed, and you do have due process. He has defied the appointment that you gave him. You told him when you appointed him and let him stay what you wanted. He has now defied you, and he is taking taxpayers' money doing that. And he does represent the city of Villa Park, just as Mayor Rissini represents the city of Villa Park when he goes to the fire authority. He votes as Vince Rissini, Mayor Villa Park. That's how your vote comes out on those minutes. The minutes are online, I read them every month, just as I read the sanitation. So, when a resident comes up and says, "Why did you vote for aerial spraying?" Okay? How are you going to answer? Because that's what's going to happen. When they start to aerial spray, you're going to get phone calls from people, whether I disagreed, disagree, doesn't matter, but you're going to want to know what happened. When we had the rat issue over at Villa Park Elementary, if we didn't have someone here on Vector Control, Steve would have been spending hours trying to figure out what's going on. He did spend quite a bit of time, but it's easier when you have someone that tells you. And this person has just told you flat out, "I am not going to come report to you. Thank you very much, I'm going to take my hundred dollars and go away." And what kind of ethics is that? So, it doesn't matter to me whether it was Nelson, whether it was me or someone else. No one should look at the City Council after you've given an appointment to represent the city and say, "I am not going to come," and report back. So, please take my comments to heart, take the ethic document that you spent so much time on and you want to have for us, and think about that a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? By all means.
I do know a little bit about Vector, because when I was on Vector, when I became a new council member here five years ago, six years ago, actually, Bill McElhoney resigned. He was the appointed person, but he didn't run for reelection because of his illness. He resigned. Now, this produces a conundrum for the Vector Control people, and I asked them if they could change our appointment to the even years versus the odd years so that it lines up with our municipal elections, which is a reasonable thing to do. We line up with the even years. So, a lot of cities do the odd years, or March, or whatever they do. So, it's a mixed bag, so I agree with that. You are absolutely right. Bill does not have to resign. He can do that, he can actually stay there. There are many people there that are like that, and the Vector Control that come from different cities. However, and of course Jim Reins, bless his soul, did not, because he didn't win reelection, but for some reason he was appointed before that election. It must have been something different that he stayed on for practically two years, but that was a long time ago. And so, I think we need to look at somehow rectifying for our own selves that we line up with the even years for the two, it is a two-year term. It's a good organization, they do a lot of good work, and also, you know, you can go there as a public attendee at these meetings and sit on the back row. Now, I know where Bill sits, because that's where I sat, we sat right next, back to all the people making all the complaints. So, it's an interesting thing, and you're right, the aerial spraying is a hot topic, any Malathion, Roundup, anything is a big deal these days. I think the thing we should do from this point forward, because Bill has every right to stay currently, but anybody new should have a provision that when you take it, you have your solemn word that when you're not in the office here, that you should resign. Bill McElhoney did that, he didn't have to. He was ill at the time, I know, and going through a lot of treatments, but that was the right thing to do. So, I don't know how we can rectify that. Obviously, you're at a situation now where Bill does not have to do anything at all, and that's okay. That's within the purview of the laws and regulations as they're written and the understanding at that time. That was all I had to say about that, because the, actually, the ethical thing to do would be for him to resign when he wasn't on the council anymore, because that's the precedent we've set for decades. So, that's all I had to say, but thank you. Bob, that was a great research you did on that, I appreciate that, I didn't know some of those things, so appreciate that. But the Attorney General has some interesting things, as always, but that could change with the wind, too, depending on what's out there. So, thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak on this matter? Thank you. My turn. Mr. City Attorney, is there cause to remove him at this point in time?
Well, I mean.
Yes or no? Yes or no, please? Yes or no?
I'm not on the witness stand. I plead the fifth. No. I think it's the incorrect question, because.
Oh, that you don't know what my remainder of questions are? I'm getting there.
The four cause requirement, in my understanding of the law, is not applicable to this situation. Not yes or no, but just because removal from office is not, it's completely statutory. It's what the statute says. And the statute outlines, you know, the 10 categories in the code section, which outline when a position is vacant, and then how you fill that vacancy. So, when I say that's not the right question, to my understanding of the law, the four cause, removal, not removal, is not how somebody is removed from the board. It has to meet one of the statutory elements.
Have we met any of those elements?
My understa, the way I look at it, it would be difficult to say we've met those elements.
Thank you. How many meetings have we had this year? Four of Vector Control, and how many has he attended?
I don't know how many, I think they meet once a month. I mean, when I'm in Yarvalinda or other cities.
Steve, I believe you have the answer to this.
The city clerk indicated that they had three meetings, and he has attended, I talked to her, the third meeting was going to be that afternoon, so I don't know if he attended, but he did attend the January and February meeting.
So, two out of three. Okay.
Well, he asked this year.
This year?
This year, so.
That's from next year. This term. Sure.
Well, he attended the December meeting, then.
Okay. So, three out of four, then? Okay.
Well, he may have attended the March meeting, I don't know, that was just last week after.
Let's just assume in the negative. This whole thing is distasteful. I would, like, former Mayor Mills offers, I would like to see it be cleaner. I'd like to see when somebody leaves office, they voluntarily resign that position, but he felt strongly about it, and he wanted to stay in the position. We didn't have legal authority to remove him, and frankly, not cause, at that time or now. I have personally asked him on no less than two different times to provide a report. I think, with all respect to my colleagues on this council, the manner in which they have demanded in a rude manner for him to appear at that dais pointing their finger is unprofessional and inappropriate. That's not how colleagues treat each other, whether they care for each other or not. That's not how we should do business. I think that sending a letter further inflames this issue and sets us back. I think that we should respectfully, and I will be happy to deliver the letter personally to Councilmember Nelson, respectfully requesting him provide, that he provide a report at least once a quarter, unless there is a pressing issue like aerial spraying, or an outbreak, or something besides routine business. I think our community is owed that, I think our council is owed that, I think we all have access to meeting minutes, and if there are significant issues, we certainly would be approached by the Vector Control District. And that's where I stand on the matter. I think that this item is political fodder, candidly. It's retribution. And I, and hang on, I'm going to finish. I asked our city manager, "Why had I not heard about this before?" And he said, "Well, because a council member said," and I'm not naming names, "They want to keep it quiet until the agenda comes out." Why? Why? Why hide it? What's the motive? What's political? That's unfortunate. Because if you ask me my opinion, clearly, I think that a duty is owed and a duty has not been fulfilled. But why? Clearly, there's a political motive here. That's unfortunate, and city staff should not be put in that position. We should act bigger and better than that. And I'm disappointed in this council and a gentleman that used to be on this council. That's all I have.
May I, to your comment, I wasn't here to be able to make any kind of political move about putting it on. My reason for putting this on is purely out of logic and transparency and accountability. So, I have to ask respectfully, if it was any other person, would you feel as vehemently strong about letting this go?
That's not what I said.
Councilman Colacott.
I learned also that, you know, when I confronted the city manager, why, why did I just find out about this at the, when the agenda came out? I was informed that two city council members had insisted that nobody be informed about this.
No, that's not true.
That's not true.
That's not true.
Anyway, that's what I was told. But typically, agenda items, you know, we all go in for briefings with the city manager, and the city manager is able to share with us, okay, what's going on, what's coming up on the agenda.
I understand, but my question, please answer my question. If it was anybody else other than former Councilman Nelson, would you still be as strong in your conviction about saying, "We should just let him be and let it go"?
Yes.
Okay, that's all, I just wanted to ask that.
And the reason is, we discussed this in January, and our city attorney gave us clear direction that, you know, we were stepping outside our bounds. And the manner of the letter, which is, you know, if you don't do this, then more will happen, I think this could be resolved with just a simple, as the mayor suggested, he could approach the Mr. Nelson and say, "We respectfully request an update as to what's going on at the Vector Control District."
Isn't that what this letter would do?
I was supporting what he was saying.
But he says he's asked him twice, and he's refused.
And now, obviously, there's a different tone, and I'd be happy to deliver a letter that respectfully requests, in a sense, an invite rather than a demand. That's the problem, that's the problem with this whole thing.
I think we're all missing a point here. This is, I think we're missing a point here.
This is not about coddling somebody.
This is about accountability. To, it's about accountability, it's not about a individual or a person. I don't care who is sitting in that role. If it's me, hold me accountable for it. This is not about Bill Nelson necessarily. He's been asked several times to provide the report to the city, to give us and the voters of this city and the residents, who are not necessarily going to sit there and who entrust us to take care of them, are not going to look at some damn agenda and go try and read minutes to figure out what's going on with Vector when the airplane's flying over spraying stuff all over. So, I'm sorry if you think this is vindictive, I'm sorry if you think this is something that's politically motivated, it's about, if it's anything, it's about accountability. I'm sorry. You know, we talked about trip reports, we talked about all kinds of different things. And he's been asked nicely several times.
Yep.
To come in here.
I concur.
Either give us a report or give us something in writing. That's all we're asking for.
Have you called? Have you called him?
No.
This is something personal between him and.
And that's the problem, and that's the problem. When a council, when a city.
Why is it about me?
Excuse me, excuse me.
Why is this about me?
When a sitting council member demands something in such a tone.
In a public meeting?
In a public meeting, it can alienate people, and that's exactly what happened. I've had the conversation, so what we have are two, with all due respect, people that.
Stop saying that.
People that.
I've asked you not to say that.
People that. People that I respect and admire in certain circumstances and some of their decision-making are acting very, very stubborn.
So, are you saying that this is all him refusing to come and report?
Unfortunately, I think there's an element of that. I think there's an element of that.
We are all grown individuals.
I agree.
This is ridiculous.
I don't like it.
It is.
I don't like it.
So, he's punishing, he's, he's punishing the citizens who, I know there's one citizen who lives on, on Dodson, who has had a terrible time with mosquitoes.
I know. I know exactly which resident you're speaking about.
Okay, so, so it is so disheartening for me to hear that because there's a petty fight that he's having with the councilperson, he is going to refuse to come and report the, the, what is gonna help improve her situation possibly.
All of our situations.
Okay.
But we're talking about sending a letter
That just basically...
potentially with legal ramifications, when there's no basis for those legal ram, legal ramifications. I'm not saying there's a difference. There's a, there's court of public opinion here, and there's a court of law. A court of law, there's no threshold been met. And a court of public opinion, of course. Of course.
Then we can tailor the letter. My reason for the letter is...
That's what I'm saying. That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so, when we, I view Villa Park and kind of my platform was, we're, we're a small business, okay? The city can be run or looked at like a small business. When you have corrective actions that need to be handled, you do a verbal warning, then you do a written warning. Then you take the corrective action. So, instead of just removing him or trying to remove him, I came up with the idea of, let's just, you know, we already did the verbal. It didn't go so well. The next step is to do a written, let's send a written letter that just respectfully asks, "Please perform your duties that we have appointed you to, to, to do, and you have done historically very well for the past three years, or the council will have to look at other actions."
The problem is, that is putting a demand before an invitation. And we should, we should put the invitation in writing because candidly, it did not come across that way from the very get-go.
I understand, but I'm gonna sound very treky right now. Hold on, Robbie. I'm gonna sound very Star Wars, treky Star Wars, but the needs of the one doesn't outweigh the needs of the many, okay? And the needs of Mr. Nelson, you know, needing some sort of apology or whatever, maybe they can get over that some other time. Right now, the needs of the community far outweigh any kind of hurt feelings.
I don't think the activities of the Orange County Vector Control or their board have ceased to exist. I share your concern, having two young children, as you know, having a mother that actively works out in the yard virtually every single day, and myself out there with her and with them, and frankly, all citizens. So, personally, professionally, and politically, it's in all of our interests that this stuff gets put in the rearview mirror and that we do get regular reporting. But this is not the mechanism. This is not the vehicle to do it, and that's my point.
Okay, well, maybe you and I can sit down and draft a letter together, but it's still about...
That's partnership. I'd be happy to do that.
It's still about giving a, a letter, a notification, that second corrective action, if you will, that, that identifies and documents. And now, we have it documented instead of just, "Oh, well, it should just be let go."
He's not, he's not, in a sense, an employee, but I understand what you're going.
I know.
Having, having run a business... Having, I understand your, your point, and I think it's about the tone. And the tone of this agenda item is the issue that I have. And I just think that that's the wrong way to go about it.
Well, I think a letter needs to be sent.
I said I'd personally deliver it and hand-deliver it myself, but it has to have the appropriate tone.
So, how can we move this forward?
Well, I think that we just, I think that we, in my opinion, I think that we don't need this agenda item to do that. I think we can send a letter, a respectful letter, saying, "We would cordially invite you to attend the next meeting and provide us with an update pursuant to your role as the Villa Park appointment to the Orange County Vector Control." And then, if he completely blows that off, then you know what? Ask, tell, make, okay? But the problem is, where is the legal theory that is going to support removal for cause? Because this clearly says with cause. With cause. I mean, I'm not making it up. That's the tone. That's what I'm upset about.
Understood.
That's what, I don't think, this, this went from one to 100 miles per hour, like that.
Well, I don't know if, if, because we've never been in that situation, I don't know if Vector Control would view the fact that we've asked verbally, he's defied us, said no. We've asked respectfully in a written document, and perhaps he says no again. I don't know if Vector Control would, would view that as cause or not because we've never done it.
We need Vector Control right now.
Yeah.
Sure, well, as, as, as to question number one, I think the best way, I mean, if the direction is to provide a letter, we can put something together, run it by an ad hoc committee of you two to make sure both sides of the argument work, and then we can send that off if that's workable to the council members. As to Vector Control's response to a letter and him not fulfilling the duties is outlined by the city council, I do not know the current regime or general manager. In the past, I know when we did it with Jim Reins, they gave us a pretty hard, you know, "No, we're gonna protect our own" type of vibe. But you're right, with Macaloney, you know, he resigned, and they facilitated that as well. So, I don't really know what their response will be as of today, frankly. But that's maybe a way forward from our current...
My goal is to get the reporting so that our citizens are informed.
Accountability.
So, however that needs to be done, Ken.
And, yeah, and whatever I'm saying is not policy. I'm just trying to explain the law, and it does have a certain odd...
Well, there's an absence, there's an absence of the law. There is an oddity here. And we need to accomplish, as a, as a council, a goal of getting a report to the council and to the community and making them aware of issues at the same time being respectful in the manner in which we do it. That's all I'm trying to say.
So, can we reword this, Mayor? Would you, would you consider?
You know, while you're looking up, I, I will say, to the oddity of it all, Vector Control's the only board that I know has sort of this process. Like OCFA, you submit a different resolution. Sand District, I think you, you know, it's just because there's that Attorney General opinion and the code sections, you're right, Bob, because it doesn't allow or specifically say it that this has been the result. This is unique, this situation.
Yeah, I think this is something we just need to get behind us, and as the old, as the old saying goes, you can accomplish a whole lot more with sugar than with vinegar. And the vinegar approach, you know, we're not going to accomplish anything.
I don't think there was a vinegar approach the whole time.
Let's, let's move beyond the comments. Let's move on to the letter.
How about changing it to, "Subject considers sending a letter to the Villa Park representative to the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District Board of Trustees regarding performance of duties and respectfully requesting..."
A report.
A report.
Period.
Period.
Period. Can we do that?
Every month.
Yes.
Every month.
A, a report, every...
Monthly report.
Monthly report. Respectfully requesting a monthly report.
And I think that was a motion.
And I'll second it.
We vote?
All in favor?
Passed by a five-year vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
Individual council member information items required, meeting attendance reports.
Do I go first?
Chad.
Can you skip me for a second?
Sure. Councilwoman Miles.
Sure, okay. I don't have a lot to report, but I did get invited to and was able to attend. So, when I was in Washington DC, I met the, the manager of the Chamber of Commerce down there, and he had spoken about a State of the City. And I said, "Gosh, what's that?" And, being new. And he said, "Oh, my gosh, it's where the mayor comes and city council, and we talk about what's going on, what's happened." I said, "Gosh, that sounds great. I wonder if we could do that for our city." And so, he said, "Would you like to go?" So, of course, I said yes. So, I was able to attend on March 14th as a guest, the State of the City with San Juan Capistrano, and it was a fabulous event. They made it a lot of fun. I will say that they are heavy drinkers. There were bottles of tequila.
Turn off the tape. Turn off the tape.
At every table. But the mayor got up and talked about new businesses coming in, talked about, you know, stuff that was much bigger than us, but the community rallied behind it, and it's something that maybe going forward in working with this council and perhaps this mayor, Mayor Protim, in the future, I thought, "Well, wouldn't that be a great idea to bring a State of the City to us?" And granted, it probably wouldn't have the same bang the first year we did it, but we could hold it out there, and residents could come, and we could talk about what we've achieved, what we're looking forward to. And I, I, I loved it and would love to be able to bring that here to this city. And then tomorrow, I actually go to the first Bridges at Kramer. I'm the committee chair for that, so tomorrow I go to that. And then, last time, I had mentioned that I was working with or communicating with William Crozer and Chris Mitten, both of whom, one's the Secretary of the Secretary of the Secretary of the Department of Transportation, and then the other one is the Intergovernmental Affairs Officer, and we're still communicating back and forth about different grants that we could be able to apply for. So, that's kind of a work in progress. That's it. Am I allowed to say that? Okay, so, the Taste of Villa Park benefiting Villa Park Little League is April 13th. It's gonna be right out here. It's a fun event. We have 18 different vendors.
The food is amazing, and it's even better this year.
It's gonna be amazing. It's a Mardi Gras event, Mardi Gras-themed. I have all the beads and all the masks, so you don't have to worry about getting your own mask. We actually have the Villa Park High School's Jazz Ensemble, who will be performing, which we loved incorporating the high school. It's open to the public. There'll be an auction. I have a whole bunch of memorabilia, sports memorabilia to be auctioned off, along with some of the standard things that we've had in the past. It's $50 for one, $90 for two, and it's all you can eat. Alcohol is, of course, served in separate charge. And anyone can contact me at my personal email if you'd like. So, love to see everyone there. It's a great event. It'll be our fourth year. That's it. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember, have comments? Sure, it's, it's late, so I'm gonna keep these brief. I wanted to highlight going to the Villa Park Science Fair at the high school, which was fantastic. Efforts of our students that are out there putting out fantastic projects was spectacular to see and well-supported in the community, so they've done a great job, and I hope we continue to see great things from them. I'll highlight that May 18th is the Rotary Gala, and that that's also a great event to go to. And I'll further say that on April 12th, Rotary of Villa Park is being honored along with a couple of other Rotary organizations by the Orange Community Services Foundation. And I'll try to provide more update on that at the, the next council meeting so that we can stay short on time. Thank you.
Thank you, Chad. Bob?
Okay. Well, on February 27th, councilperson Miles and I attended the Kramer Emergency Center Ribbon Cutting. This is a homeless shelter that was opened by the city of Anaheim. It's not, you know, for use by homeless in Villa Park, but it's a, a facility that they opened. I don't know how many beds it is, but it's quite a nice facility. It's located right off the 91 freeway, just west of Kramer. It's right next door to the Tattoo Gentlemen's Club, which is kind of an unusual location. But it does provide a safe, clean, and bright facility. It's, I thought it was very nice. They even have TV and internet access so that the guests there can relax and also, you know, with internet access, perhaps do some job search and help put their lives back together. The facility includes eating facilities, you know, very nice and clean sanitary facilities, also facilities for women and children. So, it's a, it's a nice model. I understand they have another one that they also have, are about to open, or maybe they've opened it already by now. But it's a, it's a good facility for, where people can stop and regroup and get on with their lives. In February, I attended the Urban Water Institute in Palm Springs, and I attended presentations on a number of water supply and wastewater management issues and got some good ideas that I might be able to apply on behalf of the city to help improve the, increase the, the water supply and also perhaps make some other contributions to the, the city of Villa Park. And I'll be working with the sanitation district to try to pursue those. And then, I'd also like to announce that I've, I've been invited to attend the oath of office for our new member of the Board of Supervisor, Don Wagner, and it'll be at the Great Park in Irvine tomorrow at 1:00. In actively supporting Supervisor Wagner's campaign, Mayor Rosini and I were able to establish a good relationship with our new, newly-elected supervisor. And we hope that this will help us to work with him and the county, you know, give us, you know, somebody that can help advocate for our city and some of the regional issues that may impact our city for the, for the benefit of Villa Park. So, looking forward to that and with, to working with, you know, Don Wagner and getting the, you know, introducing him to the rest of the city council members as opportunities permit. But he's a good man. I think he's, he's indicated that he'll, he'll be a good supporter for Villa Park.
Mayor Protim, please.
Aside and apart from the foundation, I had the honor of being principal for the day at Serrano Elementary School. And I have to tell you, it was an amazing experience for me, number one. I attended public education throughout my life, and it gave me a whole different perspective on how teachers are teaching our young people and molding and shaping their minds today. You know, we hear about overcrowded classrooms. We hear about 30, 40 students to one, you know, teacher or one and a half teachers, all those kinds of things. But I had, I have a totally different perspective on public education now from what I observed in the classrooms. I had the opportunity to go to every single classroom and observe the teachers that were teaching. And they, they have found a way creatively to break up the kids in smaller groups and give them individualized attention. And I was just amazed at the strides that had been taken to, to help our young people here, especially in Villa Park, learn more. You know, it, it was just, it was my honor, and I was just, I was totally humbled by the whole experience. Well, we attended, Chad and I both attended the, the event afterwards, and they did presentations and discussions. It was just, it was, it was a thrill for me to, to be able to do that. I really appreciate them thinking of me and asking me to do that, so, thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Apologies. I, for some reason, I thought I mentioned, I thought we talked about it last month, but, gosh, being principal of the day at Serrano Villa was a tremendous honor. And I just want to say thank you to the principal, Mrs. Ogan, for inviting me and for the, the time that I got to spend there, visiting their, their school. There's a, a variety of programs that they're doing there that are so phenomenal. The interaction between the staff, the students, and the teachers, the, the atmosphere they have is fantastic. And I was, it was an amazing event and very well done. I, I have to say, I also was fortunate to do the, the Serrano Elementary the previous year, having done it two years in a row. That Serrano is a fantastic school. All of our schools in Villa Park are excellent institutions of learning, and I truly respect them and hope that we can continue to do whatever we can as a city council, as other organizations, to support them.
I am going to defer most of my comments till next meeting, except for the required meeting attendance, which, in the interest of time, I attended two meetings with the Orange County Fire Authority, as I previously discussed. And look forward to hopefully getting a resolution to the Irvine matter very, very soon. It's in all of our interests, and I think there'll be some significant benefits to the city of Villa Park in the long run, as well as all other member agencies in Orange County as a whole. I want to thank everybody for coming out this evening, for listening and watching on TV. I'd like to thank my councilmembers, who are all elected volunteers. None of these people are paid except for a few of the county meetings that they attend, and it requires a tremendous amount of preparation and time. I'd like to thank our staff, our city attorney, and all of you at home. Be well, be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second.